I want to go ahead and start the meeting. This is February twenty first, two thousand eighteen. We just got in a closed session. We're going to start a regular meeting. Can I have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go ahead and start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember DeGoliere?
Here.
Councilmember LeBris?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whitmer?
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Uh, here. Do we have any? We didn't have any public comments. Mr. Commerce, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to have a conference with the labor negotiator. The labor negotiator was city manager, the employee organization's underrepresented employee district chief. The city council listened to the presentation and gave directions to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Commerce. I apologize that I moved around a little bit through the pledge of allegiance and the roll and did the pledge allegiance and the roll in closed session, or at least we didn't do the pledge allegiance but the roll in closed session. We don't have any presentations this evening. That actually will be done another day. We are going to move to the public comments and we are looking for any item that is not on the agenda. So any member of the public would like us to get any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments and we'll move to item number four, five, by the city manager's report.
Six.
Six.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have the written city manager's report in front of you. I did answer a little Q and A before the meeting went on, hung with a few council members on a few items in. What staff is present this evening to address any other questions the council may have?
Perfect. Any members of the city council want to talk or discuss any other item on the consent agenda, item eight through sixteen, or poll, then Rick, please.
I would poll item thirteen.
Um, Elizabeth?
That was the item I just want to poll also.
Any other members who'd like to poll any item on the consent agenda? Seeing item number thirteen, any member of the public, would you like to poll any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, going to bring it back. Then I did a motion to approve items eight through sixteen minus thirteen. Can I take a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, Rick, would you like to discuss number thirteen now?
Item thirteen calls for approval of a resolution in collaboration with the cities of Redwood City, Mountain Park, Powell Oak, and Mountain View regarding a peninsula bike way route through Atherton, which has very minimal cost to Atherton and is identified in attachment A to item thirteen. And this calls for sign toppers, to ten sign toppers to current signs, and a sign topper in this case is proposed to say peninsula bike way within the little image of a bike. So basically, it adds to the current Atherton bike pathway signs, to a limited number of them, an identifier that identifies it as, in addition to a bike way within Atherton, a bike way that's approved by peninsula bike way. And I think that's great. I love the idea of these little toppers. You don't have to put up new poles. You don't have to put up new signs. You just put up a very inexpensive little image, metal image, on top of the existing sign and identifies it as part of the peninsula bike way. I have two comments, which is why I polled it. The first is, there are two different sign topper images that are included in, I think it's attachment two. One says peninsula bike way with the image of a bicycle. That's the one on the left. And the other just says, shows an image of a bicycle and says peninsula. I think that the one that makes the most sense is the one on the left. So instead of having two, I don't know what the proposal would be to have two different images, but I would say for Atherton, it makes the most sense to use that topper on the left. The second comment that I have is, the proposal calls for, in addition to ten of these toppers on existing bike route signs, the addition of some additional signs and four new poles. And I would like staff to look at where, I haven't actually driven the route myself, but I'd like staff to look at the proposed locations for those new poles, because I think it's in the interest of the town to minimize the amount of poles and signs that we have. If they are redundant, we don't need them. So I noticed in the proposal that there's a couple intersection where it appears to call for poles on multiple corners of that same intersection. That strikes me as unnecessary, but I think it requires someone to go around and look at it and make sure. And if, in fact, we can get away with a single pole, have an appropriate topper, I think that would be much better.
Great, Rick. And Elizabeth, you had some comments. Is this someone's voice?
Very similar comments. I won't reiterate everything, but to the extent that the topper could be on our existing bike route poles and not adding the peninsula topper, I think that topper on top of the street name will be hard to see. It doesn't seem very, I mean, that it just could be the image, but if it, what does it mean? You know, because I don't really see a graphic very clearly that it's a bike. I have no problem with the text of the actual resolution, but I do have the serious problems of having this peninsula bike route through our residential streets. I prefer to have it on El Camino Real, but we don't have it safe enough on El Camino Real to have bike routes. But I think that that's something that we need to try to work towards. I think that there are potential intersection problems of crossing Atherton Avenue at Austin where, you know, a bike, it could conflict with a lot of traffic, heavy traffic. But I think it's a great idea to connect the cities. And I guess my alternate hope would be is that we do it along the El Camino Real throughout the region with a safe bike and head lane, especially through our town.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And I apologize, I kind of stepped on staff and glad Rick could actually do the staff report. He did a very good job at it. Is there any additional comments that staff would want to add to this?
No, Mayor, but you lounges here from Hall of Planning if you have any further questions about how we got to this point in the process.
Thank you very much. Bill, any questions?
Yeah. I don't know what's coming.
We'll give, if we can, I'll close comments, sorry. We did a little unusual.
It was Rick.
Rick did it. We'll close public comments after I ask any member of the audience to, but if any of you here doesn't have any comments, I think we'll go ahead and ask the public. Okay. Any members of the public have any comments related to the item that was polled, number thirteen? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments back to any final comments, Bill.
So, we don't have a whole lot of those street signs, which is, I was surprised that when we're putting away, we normally have those pillars in many of those locations on those streets, so there wouldn't be the ones on the right.
That's true.
First off. And, and secondly, where we're putting those signs on top of the bike lanes, if there is wayfinding on the pavement, I assume we're taking that up, since that is a source of irritation to some people.
You mean the charros?
Well, in some cases that we have wayfinders, so it tells people that the bike lane is going to the right or going to the left. So where those are, then I would think that we would eventually take those up.
You mean where they may, where they conflict, you mean? Where the signs might conflict?
Not, but there's not going to conflict, it's just that we don't want to have, we don't need to have redundant signs.
Right.
Okay? There's been a lot of complaints about the signs and the, and the laminates on the, on the pavement.
Right.
So we're, we're having that there, then we wouldn't be replacing that over time or we would eliminate that.
That's correct. As Councilmember DeGoli said, we're going to go out there individually, look at all these, one by one, and make sure we're not putting in additional sign, or poles that we don't need out there and making sure the signs are placed appropriately.
Mike, any final?
Just as is noted here, I'll take him and present it to the Transportation Committee. The Transportation Committee actually raised similar issues about signage, but there's a gentleman over here with my, my memory of his, his response to questions about signage, there have to be enough to give people direction. We don't know the path or ten, so that was a balance. But generally, the Transportation Committee will support the, the situation there. As am I.
Thank you, Mike. I am just going to make one comment to my colleagues and everybody. Getting enough comments about signage in the interest is just the added peninsula bike way. I had a call from the resident that mentioned, why does it have to advertise? Is this going to be a sort of, true peninsula? Peninsula? And of course, it's not, but just to know for, for the record. I think that staff has enough, this is more of staff direction, clearly he's got enough to understand which poles, and the investment on our part is three hundred dollars.
Yes.
So no necessary action.
The resolution.
Resolution.
Please, my emotions.
Motion to approve the resolution is written.
Can I get a second, please?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are going to be moving on to the regular agenda, items number seventeen through twenty-two. I am going to do a beginning poll to figure out how many people are here for the fire district issue. And can I see that show of hands? Any member, members here for the rail component policy issue? Okay. You're pretty much, oh, well, light up to rail. Okay, light up to rail. So we're just going to switch those items, just to do it a little bit faster in the interest of time. We're going to go ahead and start with item number eighteen, which is Caltrain Electric Pageant Project, discussed with prior direction regarding Caltrain's response to the letter dated February sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Mike O'Shaw, party please.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have any additional information than what's in your staff report.
Okay. Any members of the council have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Bill, please.
Mike, can you just very briefly give us the timeframe where we were advised with regards to the height of the pole and, and the type of poles that we're getting in from Caltrain, because there's been some comments with regards to, you know, who knew what, when, when we were notified and, or if we were notified on things. So just could you refresh us on that, please?
Well, you know, the first time that staff became aware of it was in November, at this council meeting, as part of the cooperative or the agreement with the PCEP. And I think during those discussions, representatives from Caltrain who were here that evening talked about the double cantilever pole, the forty-five foot height. And then as a result of that, you know, we had staff reports in December, January, and this month to, to discuss those.
So it was backwards though, or did you go backwards to the beginning of the conversation around the centerline pole?
Well, when, when there was conversation around the centerline pole alignment, really what the focus on was the impacts of trees. And I think that was back in June or July. And again, the focus there was having discussions with Caltrain to see the feasibility of having centerline poles versus the two outside poles, because of the minimization of tree impacts.
But we made it clear then that we were interested in the trees, and it turned out there was only one non-heritage tree, but a design of Caltrain's plans that's supposed to have date of the fifth, June, two thousand and fifteen, seemed to show that it's going to be the double cantilever poles, right?
In, in conversations with Caltrain, yes, my understanding that double cantilever poles was always part of their design bit package. And the rationale for that was that, you know, because of communities' concerns about tree impacts, so basically, they, they went around that would minimize those impacts. And so that was the reason why their original design package. And that's why, you know, their position now is that this was part of the original design package, at this point to make a change, and that's what the contractor provided a cost on, and at this point to make that change is going to be a cost impact to the project.
Right, but, but in, in two thousand and fifteen, at a thirty-five percent design, I mean, it's just pending ink, it's not a major impact, and so, and even at sixty-five percent, when a design is done, you're not out launching orders at sixty-five percent, you're launching orders when you're closer. I mean, it's the same as us building the building. We're not going out and asking for bids and we don't have the design done, right? And I realize Caltrain is a little bit different, but it's not exactly the same, that's the thing. I'm just, I'm just surprised that things have been going on for so long, it seems like, and that, you know, and that maybe we weren't clear, working with Caltrain, or Caltrain wasn't clear working with us, and that the fact that, you know, this price that we got just seems to kind of be out of range, so those are like two or three different things that are kind of confusing. But okay, thank you very much for some clarification.
Please, Mike.
Yeah. Question about communications. We, we sent, or Mayor, we sent them, sent Caltrain a letter on January twenty-ninth. They responded approximately a week later on February sixth. Can you describe, have we had any communication with Caltrain since February sixth, and was there any communication between Feb. sixth and Jan. twenty-ninth? I guess I'm asking, what communications have we had since we had twenty-ninth?
As far as, you know, staff, we have not had any.
Zero.
Yeah.
Why do you want to meet with Casey?
That was, I think, that was probably, I can't remember. But in the two most recent letters, where the mayor sent a letter, Caltrain responded, well, there was that one meeting that the mayor and the city manager had, and I don't know when that was.
You were, that was Seamus and.
Yeah. That was after the letter was issued and we got a response back from Caltrain.
That's where, no. And was, we received our first letter, we set up a meeting, the mayor's response to that first letter, we met, and then we got the follow-up response.
We got this follow-up response.
What date did you mean?
Two Tuesdays ago, I thought, something like that.
Two Tuesdays ago.
Yeah.
Official date.
Seems like it was longer.
No, it was from, it was in January, yes, exactly, yeah.
Yes.
I meant in January.
Are you going to make me look at my calendar?
Of course.
Hey, sorry, I could, staff will be right on that. Here we are. Six, sixteenth.
January.
Sixteenth of January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got the meeting. And we have had conversations with them, informally. I've had conversations with Casey Folsom, which has been, and actually, after our meeting on that date, that's when Caltrain also had, had a public meeting in the park, was, was after our original meeting. And then subsequently, they got a response to our letter. And I've had contact with Casey Folsom at the LPMG, so there's been some conversations related to, but that, their letter was not in our hands yet, so where were we going? It was, it was at management at that point. So what we do know is what is in here.
So there's been no communication whatsoever since Feb. sixth, is that right? That, that's when their final letter was?
Yeah.
Yep? Other than just follow-up, asking when it's on our mountain?
Right.
And.
And that they wouldn't be available this evening, so we knew that.
And between receiving our January twenty-ninth letter.
Yes.
And their response on February sixth, the JPA met, and the program, change program review committee met, and they reviewed your January twenty-ninth letter and then came up with this. I've had a couple of board members from the JPA speak to me at other meetings going, you got staff's letter, kind of a thing, and it's a, please, some, some members on the JPA, I, I believe, are just kind of gloating that they're putting it to us in a way. I should probably not say that, but it's, I think that's how I feel, especially when a council member in particular. So, and anyway.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were referring to one of the council members.
No, here.
Yeah.
On the JPA, on the list, the masthead, here.
Okay, all right.
That's, I'm not, I'm not asking any clarifying questions at this time.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and ask members of the public, and my colleagues, thank you, Elizabeth, for coming to the public.
Yeah.
Any members of the public that would like to make comments related to this item on the agenda, please step up to the microphone. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sharon Hume, and I think you all have heard me speak at previous council meetings at the topic. And basically, I'm here this evening in my role as president of the Homeowners Association of Lloydton Park to request that you approve reimbursing Caltrain for the two hundred thousand dollar cost associating with changing their design to accommodate the thirty-foot poles in the corridor adjacent to our neighborhood. In addition, we urge you to make and act upon that decision as quickly as possible to meet Caltrain's February twenty-eighth deadline. This was not brought up just in the, in the comments that were made, but they have also not only said they want two hundred thousand dollars, but they want the issue resolved by February twenty-eighth, for sense of urgency. We really do, everybody in Lloydton Park appreciates your efforts to negotiate with Caltrain to arrive at a mutually beneficial solution in which they would modify their design, and we are very disappointed that Caltrain not, chose not to reach a compromise and instead provide the town with what we see as an ultimatum. We formally made this request in a letter to help, shared with the council yesterday. I believe you all should have a copy of it. In addition, support for this expenditure is reflected in the separate letter that was submitted to the council by over sixty-two residents on February eighteenth, and we should have copies of that either. And as, at the, as there has been at the past two council meetings, there are a significant number of homeowners who are present tonight to show their support and to, for this, for this issue. We're asking you to approve this expenditure, not only because it's the right thing to do for the ninety homeowners in Lloydton Park, but because the town should not have allowed this issue to get to the point. Had the issue of the double-track cantilever poles been properly addressed when it was brought to the attention of a previous staff member last summer, the design could have been modified without the current two hundred thousand dollar price tag. One of my colleagues will, will speak in more detail to that. Furthermore, this is not only an issue that affects Lloydton Park homeowners, it also affects the character of the entire town. As stated in our letter, these massive poles will not only impact Lloydton Park directly, but they will intrude upon the overall aesthetics of the about-to-be-built town center. The goal for the town center is to be, to be a beautiful focal point for all town activities, should not be compromised with these poles at the periphery. Another one of my, my colleagues will speak, another two, actually, of my colleagues will speak more to how an eyesore in one part of Atherton will sully the entire town. In summary, we are requesting that the city council authorize this prudent two hundred thousand dollar investment to substitute shorter poles in the Lloydton Park corridor for the benefit of Lloydton Park and the entire town of Atherton. Thank you.
Sharon's next, Sharon's next caller?
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. The fundamental question for the town of Atherton is, didn't those individuals tasked with Caltrain negotiations ask Caltrain what kind of poles are planned north of Fair Oaks Lane? In June of two thousand and fifteen, when Caltrain's thirty-five percent design for pole layout was completed and showed five double-track cantilever poles north of Fair Oaks Lane as of June of two thousand and fifteen, why didn't they ask? In June and July of two thousand and seventeen, this past year, when the town successfully negotiated pole changes at Holbrook Palmer Park at zero cost to the town, why didn't they ask about the poles north of Fair Oaks Lane? In June and August of two thousand and seventeen, when one of these individuals pronounced at two rail committee meetings that only centerline poles would be installed throughout all of Atherton, why hadn't someone asked to get the accurate information? On August eighth of two thousand and seventeen, when one of these individuals is told by a homeowner that a double-track, that double-track cantilever poles will start eight hundred feet north of Fair Oaks Lane, not the centerline poles we had just heard about minutes before, why didn't this cause an investigation into these massive poles, starting back then in August eighth, if nothing in fact had been started in June of two thousand and fifteen, when the thirty-five percent design was finished and available publicly? On August eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, when another of these individuals is emailed a formal alert that double-track cantilever poles, massive poles possibly up to sixty feet, were planned north of Fair Oaks Lane, why didn't they start an investigation? On August twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, when one of these individuals sent a text to the homeowner acknowledging that in fact, Caltrain does admit there will not be centerline holes north of Fair Oaks Lane, why didn't they investigate and why wasn't the city council told, starting then on August twenty-third, subsequent to that text confirmation? If these individuals had asked Caltrain last summer and investigated this pole issue, then there would have been ample time to get the shorter poles at no cost, just as was done at Holbrook Palmer Park. Therefore, because mistakes were made and balls were dropped, we ask the town to pay the two hundred thousand dollar fee to protect Lloydton Park and the surrounding neighborhoods and areas which will see these monstrous poles. The devastating, to protect Lloydton Park from the devastating consequences of what is a town mistake. And I thank you, and it's very difficult for me to say this, because I think every city council member here knows how much respect and admiration I have for each one of you, because I've worked with many of you over the last two and a half years on some very difficult projects. So it's difficult, but this needs to be said, we have a lot at stake here. It's a very important issue, and I thank you.
Thank you, person. Any other members? Thank you, please.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth Lewis, and I live at twenty-two Ridden House Avenue. Members of the Atherton City Council, my neighbors in Lloydton Park and I, want to thank you for your leadership since November in trying to resolve the issue of the unnecessarily massive double-track poles proposed for a Caltrain corridor through our neighborhood. We respectfully request that the town pay the two hundred thousand dollar fee which Caltrain has requested to make design changes to have the lower thirty-foot poles rather than industrial-scale forty-six double, forty-six feet double cantilevered poles with their massive forty-five foot horizontal spans which will be visible at great distances. These huge poles would not comply with a major goal of Atherton's general plan, to preserve our town's character as a scenic, rural, residential area, and also with the associated town policy that all streets and roads in the town should associated town policy that all streets and roads in the town shall be preserved as scenic routes. We very much appreciate it that you have appropriated up to $175,000 to save five heritage trees near the new civic center to preserve the scenic rural beauty of Atherton. We ask that you invest the comparable amount to also protect the scenic rural character of the streets and roads of Lloydton Park and the surrounding areas from which you'll be able to see the poles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Frank Burke, and I've spoken to you at prior meetings. I'm here to address the question, is this only a Lloydton Park issue? And I suggest that it is not just a Lloydton Park issue, it affects the very ground that we're standing on right now. I've studied and re-studied the lovely pictures of this town center-to-be and the diagrams that are on the website, and it's really gonna be a beautiful, I'd say magnificent town center. It reminds me, this town center and the Atherton Train Station reminds me of the town squares where I grew up in Massachusetts and New England. The town square in New England is the beating heart of the town, the seat of the government, in our case, the seat of our library, our, our police force and our train station. I've spent time, I drive across the Fair Oaks Lane crossing every day, and I've spent time trying to imagine in my mind what those beams will look like. I don't think they're accurately described as poles, because I've studied the Denver photos, they're not cylinders, they're beams, they're horizontal, they're beams that have, are rectangular in width, and they go 46 feet up and 45 feet across, and they have a very large cable that holds them up. So if you, as I have, stand on the rail crossing at Fair Oaks Lane, which is really the gateway to the new civic center, and try to imagine what would these look like, they will look like, if you look at the pictures from Denver, if you look at them from a distance horizontally down the track, they'll look like an industrial structure. There'll be five of them in a row, 200 feet apart, starting 800 feet from that crossing. They will look like an industrial structure impeding upon this town center, our train station, it's visible through the entire platform of the train station and in the Fair Oaks Crossing. Obviously, you can't see it from this spot, but it will be a major imposition. Visitors drive across that crossing every day, residents drive across that crossing every day. I hope and envision, I know that in the past we've had a lot of events here in this civic center, and I'm really hoping with the design that you guys have come up with, that we'll see more of those in the future, more community activities in this center. Those people coming to the beating heart of our town shouldn't be looking at this ugly industrial group of structures 800 feet away. It would be a significant detriment to the beauty of our town, and that's why I think this is more than just a Lloydton Park issue. Thank you.
Thank you. My speaker? Seeing there were speakers, I'm gonna go ahead and close a couple of comments, and I'm ready to act counsel for further discussion, deliberation. Rick, would you like to leave? It's like a hot potato, isn't it?
Well, sure.
Please do.
Yeah. It's, it, it really is a conundrum. It's a terrible thing that has happened, and I believe that Caltrain has not acted in good faith in dealing with Atherton. And I think it's really easy to try to kind of throw staff under the bus or under the train, if you will, for maybe overlooking something and not asking and probing the right specific questions at a specific time. The, there's no secret to the fact that Atherton has been a thorn in Caltrain's side for a long time because we have sued several times, we've, you know, you know, we've been the little engine that could in trying to stop high-speed rail in lots of ways, and up and down the peninsula, I mean, all the other San Mateo County representatives, and I work with most of them who serve on the MTC, who serve on the Transportation Authority, who are on this JPB, Calmod Board for the transportation engine up and down the peninsula from San Jose to San Francisco. And I, I get a earful sometimes about it, that they, you know, oh, you know, Atherton, this and that and everything, and this is, so, so why did Caltrain not come to us with sirens blazing and say, you know, just because you want to save trees, we're gonna have to install a 50-foot pole or five of them, and, and the tree that we're gonna save, because you want us to save this tree, is, you know, an eucalyptus that is not even a native or heritage tree. So, so I don't think they've really worked in good faith with us because, you know, they kind of don't like us. Are they deliberately doing it to get back at us? Is it retribution? I don't know. Is it because at this point it's easier for them to install five giant poles instead of 10 shorter poles? It doesn't make sense to me because they've engineered the shorter poles all up and down the corridor. The letter that they sent back, the most recent letter, is kind of insulting because one of the conditions, not only is that we write them the $200,000 check, which I believe is how much they had to spend on the lawsuit for the EIR that we launched, and they want to get that money back. It's, but demanding that we not sue and exercise our legal rights in perpetuity for the next, you know, in whatever. Is that a criminal? Are they doing it criminally? I think councilor said it's not a criminal, but civil, I mean, it's, it's a bad thing. I mean, I would never, ever agree to that term. Will they negotiate with us?
Nobody's asked us.
Yeah. Will they negotiate with us? If we, if we all went as a body, as elected officials, to their JPB board meeting and pled our case in a political forum, would that make a difference? I, I don't think the $200,000 fee is negotiable, but some of these other terms, which I think should not be part of the deal, need to be eliminated. I don't think this is the end, end result here that, that they've given us, I think that we need to continue to work with them. Time is running near, and why? What is the magic deadline of February 28th? I don't know. So, it's, and if we look down the road, down the train tracks with 10 shorter poles, would that be more of an eyesore? 10 versus 5, you know? I don't know, because you have more mass, and it's all, but it's shorter, so.
No crossbeak.
Those are my, those are my initial comments. Can I reserve to make additional comments later, ma'am?
You can always reserve.
Thank you.
Counselwoman, Vice Mayor, please.
So, first off, I'm surprised the demands from the town of Caltrain were, at 65% completion, made it clear that we were not pleased with the solution, and I think before that, the residents and the rail committee also made it clear that they were not happy with that. So, there was no real discussion, I don't believe, on this, they, they didn't come back to us and talk to us about the fact that only one tree now had to be adjusted for, and it wasn't a heritage tree. I think that, yes, we wanted to save trees, and that was our, our feedback to them, but yet, when they found out there was only one tree that either had to be taken out or severely pruned, they didn't come back and say, hey, what do you think? The pictures that have been in the pack showing the north and south route with the poles up against the tree, I believe this is very misleading, as many of those trees are very well-trimmed, and the poles in fact will be an eyesore. And so I'm very, very disappointed with the situation that we're faced with at this time. Secondly, I'm disappointed with the many city and county leaders who in some cases indicated support and assurances that they would work with us on this, and then that seemed to all vanish and go away. And in fact, similar to Councilwoman Lewis's, I regularly hear from a number of people who also sit on that, on other issues, how we're all rich down here, we can afford anything. Our budget is substantially less than those jurisdictions, and it matters not what the revenue of the town is. Okay, what is the fact is despite assurances of working with the communities, that they, despite the fact that they, they gave us assurances that they would be working with the communities in which they're going to affect, it appeared that those were nothing other than words. So honestly, with all the facts that are, are going around, and who knew what when and all that, it just doesn't seem that it's real clear to me as to where fault may or may not lie, who may or may not be responsible. So, you know, I think maybe it should be some sort of shared thing. Yeah, as such, you know, I think that there should be some fee, perhaps we need to contribute to some fee, but I think that $200,000 is way, way too high, I think that Caltrain is gouging us. The amount of money that we paid on the trees, by the way, was $103,000 if I recall. George, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, I could, I could be swayed to support something along those lines. The other conditions that were in that letter were absolutely inappropriate, they were overly broad, and, and I think that, you know, that letter was a shot across the bow, and I would hope that there would be some margin for some negotiations. But $200,000 really, based on where we are financially, I think is, is a bridge too far for, you know, for all of us, I think. And so I think that those are my comments at this point. Done, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Rick, would you like to chime in?
I'll pass.
Mike. Did you kill it?
What is that?
Don't, don't, tell him he has it, he can't jump back in, because this is last time.
This is a lot of pass pass? Mike. Sure. So, a couple of, a couple of offshoots. One is, I'm very, very sympathetic to the place of Lloydton Park, and I think that that's a reasonable goal that we're trying to achieve there, and folks are trying to achieve it. I'm concerned, another point, I want to make sure that I don't want to presume that another public agency is acting in bad faith. So I don't want to presume they're acting in good faith, and to that extent, what I'd like to do is focus on a path forward, because I don't think the path forward is saying yes to this proposal, and there's several components to that, some of it is the money, but actually, in my brain, the money's actually not as important as some of the other conditions that are on there, but that's something we could agree to. And so I, there's almost no point to have a conversation unless we know we can engage in a conversation, which then that actually rules this proposal in some direction. And that's what I'm searching, I haven't heard any, any way in which we can, we can engage in that conversation, and if we can't have that conversation, I don't think it's, I don't think we have the power at this point, or that we should, to say yes to what there is. So we need to pursue a way to have, to engage in a conversation there and move to some kind of compromise with them. I can tell you that conversation, from my perspective, should not include our weight and our rights to sue them under any set circumstances, that's, that's something that's not a helpful move, and that's actually, in my view, bordering on bad faith that they would even ask that question. So that's, I, I feel a little bit lost, because I think we have to say no to this, but I don't want to say no to this and end up with a series of memes that, that, you know, local residents are getting, and we know going in they're thinking that, and, so I'm trying to figure out what the path is, and I'd love to hear some conversations of whether we can engage Caltrain in a conversation that will lead to some kind of compromise here.
Can I just respond? Because I had a conversation with one of the board members at the committee meeting that I went as the alternate.
Can you do that, or?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and so that was just last Thursday, and, you know, he says, no, you've got staff letter, right? And I said, this isn't, this isn't insult, you know, just keep talking, you know, and I raised the issue about the, not to sue, so, you know, staff. So I think there is an opening to continue the conversation with the board members and not just staff. So I would like to try that.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sorry.
I was gonna look over here to Rick, but Rick's not talking. No, go ahead.
I have a question.
Please.
Does staff think that the best way to come up with a solution is to have a subcommittee of the council, or perhaps with the board members, as Elizabeth suggested, or force staff to meet with staff, or what's the staff then?
I think a subcommittee of the council's a good idea, to work with perhaps a subcommittee of their board if they're willing to do that. I would certainly include our staff in that conversation, but led by a subcommittee of the council would be very helpful, because at this point, to some of the other comments on the council, there are elected members on that JPB who have distinct perspectives of Atherton.
There's one guy about that, there are people on the peninsula that have distinct attitudes about Atherton, some of which are favorable and some of which aren't.
Yes.
So I think that, I, I met with two different board members today, and I believe that there is an opportunity to come to a solution here, but I think that what Bill said is accurate, there's been a lot of talk, and that talk has resulted in what I consider very insulting letters, that have demands that are just unreasonable demands, and I don't believe that those demands just come from staff. I think they reflect an attitude that probably is based in Caltrain being angry, and by Caltrain, I mean both staff and board members being angry with Atherton for attempting to derail their electrification program with the lawsuit that we brought, which went nowhere, and for what they perceive to be an attitude from Atherton, which frankly, I think should change, and I've said this before, I think that we should use this opportunity to reset our relationship with Caltrain. I think that we need a good relationship with Caltrain, and we have the basis for it. We, this council was responsible for helping fund Caltrain when Caltrain first got funded, we have to own that stake in the ground. And, and we, and I think we need to proudly step forward with Caltrain and own that stake in the ground, and that means working with them, that doesn't mean dictating, we don't have the ability to dictate, but we, I think we can work with them. Now, I, I, I acknowledge that it could just be worse, but, you know, there are, I had a discussion with the city manager today, and there are terms in the, in the response to the EIR that Caltrain agreed to that involve costs, and it may be possible for us to waive some of those costs, which could be beneficial to Caltrain and could cover more, and more than cover the cost of doing this redesign, and I'd like to have that conversation with them and explore that possibility. I really think it's important for us to... I really think it's important for us to, like Mike said, not assume that they're acting in good faith. In fact, I think-
Or bad faith.
That, or in bad faith. I think that their, their attempt to, their agreement to put the poles in the center line, where they could put them in the center line, was absolutely in good faith. And met with what we requested. I think there were misses around this issue about what happens with the poles north of Faroe's. And we were very focused on trying to get the poles put into the center line because that was going to impact the trees the least. And I, I think that, you know, they didn't communicate very well with us. So there's, there are some problems with this whole process, but that happens. You know, that's part of the business of being on a council in a municipality in this county. It just happens. And I hope that we can do, we can, we can find a way to sit down and talk with them. I don't take seriously that there's some looming deadline. There have been four or five deadlines, all of which have passed. And they're not about to come into Atherton. They're not, they're still in Burlingate, moving south. So, yeah, they, they want to know that they can, you know, do the work and have support and we'll help them if they have to remove the tree, try to remove the tree. And we can, in good faith, provide help where we can. But we can't make the kinds of ridiculous guarantees that they've asked for in this letter.
Thank you, Elizabeth, please.
Just to add on to that, in a conversation with one of their board members about the fact that, let me see. Well, number one, I think that we, as a council with the center line poles, kind of thought that that was the length of our, that they were going to be able to do it the length. Okay, that was at least mine until it came to the fact that they didn't have the room in the middle. But the conversation with one of the board members was that we can, I think, discuss this further. And we should. It's, it's not hard to guess. So I think that, that, and that's one of our more favorable external forums. And what he also said in response to me saying, you know, you guys are picking on us, he says, that in a mega infrastructure project like this, from San Jose to San Francisco, the gorillas on either end are San Francisco and San Jose making the most noise about what they want and, and beating up on the, the board members. And Atherton is this little kind of burr in the middle. And so they just want to smooth things over with us. And I think they're just being, they're being handled. But I agree with Rick that we need to reset the relationship. And we have a former council member, two former council members and mayors in the audience, Malcolm and James Janz. Malcolm, you, Rick was referring to you, that you were instrumental in putting the Caltrain JPD together, you know, in funding and finding funding for it. So that is something we need to bring to the table. Maybe we brought you with us, you know, as a member of our community. As part of, to create our case. They haven't given us detail on the $200,000. It's kind of a number that they pulled out of their head, I think. So, is that negotiable? We don't know.
Thank you. I, I, my colleagues, as you can all see, everyone up here has had additional contacts, not always healthy, but we've had additional contacts with members of Caltrain, members of JPVs and everything else to try to come up with solutions. And it's not just me out there trying to negotiate, it's everybody touching. And you can see where all these little moving parts, which means that this issue is a far more complex issue than what the letter says. Because there are people involved that may not be too happy or for whatever other reason. But what I want to do is drill down to where we are and see if we can come up with a game plan. I think my colleagues are all correct. I think that there's still, I don't know if there isn't a drop dead date of the 28th. We can't assume that there isn't. Because it all, it's of our best interest is to try to see if we can continue to sit here, facilitate some form of negotiation, to come to some resolve that's reasonable for everybody. The difficulty is that we got a letter that is pretty much displeasing to everybody here, as well as everybody up here. Not what we expected. I've had additional contact when I mentioned it, and it's one of the things that was mentioned. I have so many contacts with members of Caltrain's and other boards that sometimes I don't even know what day of the week it is. But in one of my last contacts, one of the issues was, if we give this to you, and then forget all the other stuff, right? Forget all the pissed off about whatever, you know, EIR's suing. But the fact of the matter is that other jurisdictions have asked. If Atherton's getting something, we want to do our change too. We don't want to pay either, so, you know, why don't we do it? So there is that sentiment behind this particular letter that, well, if we do it, then they're going to have to say South City or San Mateo or another jurisdiction, that they might have 20 poles. And they don't want to pay either. So there is that other side of the coin. Not that I know if it's true or not. I can only assume what they tell us is true. So to get to where we are now, and I do agree with Rick, that maybe two members at heart with this council can continue to work in an effort to try to come up with a reasonable resolve. But we do have to find a reasonable resolve related to the $200,000. Because everything else, I think, is some factor that we can work with somehow, I think, the two members of us. But as far as appropriating the $200,000 is a discussion that we have to have because it doesn't make sense to have two of us facilitate the needs for the community if the community, if we all agree that we're in agreeance to pay the $200,000 or fee, or come up with a figure that we're agreeable on. So that's something that we have to discuss because I think that everything else is an item that we can work with in some way in conversation with some numbers of Caltrain. So if I can just get people to chime in strictly on $200,000.
I'd like to apologize, but, but, what are you missing there? Because I, for me, for example, the sentences in here that say that Atherton will agree that will not be a party to, nor will the town finance, support, encourage, facilitate, pursue, or file any claim lawsuit or dispute related to the electrification project, is, is not something that I think we should accept. So you think there'll be some, some room to negotiate that with somebody?
So I do believe that there is some negotiation. I think that what we're seeing in this is probably a whole lot of frustration and a whole lot of anger and a whole lot of input from a whole lot of people. And I think that if we can get a more direct line of communication to iron out, I think that might be related to the whole specific. So while this is a bright, wide brush, that I think we may be able to narrow the focus down. If they're saying, I'm going to take a guess here. You guys are now asking for another change. If we put those poles in, we don't want to hear from you and you're going to sue us because we changed what you wanted to do and we don't want to get sued. So if we do that, we don't want to hear from you. So I think that if we have that focus on that as our response to them in negotiations and not just, this doesn't make sense. So whoever would agree to that?
No.
Okay, come on. Right, and I think everybody's serious. If it's an insult, well, it's an insult, so it's two. So it's obvious, there are two lawyers up here, clearly. This is just impossible. But maybe, I think that that's where the spirit intent of that is. And if we can drill down on that and come up with a reasonable, well, okay, if we agree that we want to change those poles, no, we will not sue you related to just those poles. Doesn't mean that if another issue comes on, we don't believe where we will ask related to that, but we keep the focus on it. So that's what I think related to that.
I applaud you.
So I'm saying, so, yeah, you may not agree. And if I necessarily, if necessary, and I, if necessary, a subcommittee cannot come to some type of agreement and we can call a special meeting just to get the approval of the final letter, then that's one thing, and I, and I'm okay with that, right? I, I don't want the whole burden to be put on two people, especially not me, but two people. And then you guys not be happy with that because the consensus of. But it's not even a discussion item if we can't discuss the $200,000. Because I think that that's your $200,000 figure. If we cannot get $200,000 some way and somehow, or the up to, let's use the word up to, because we really haven't gotten a complete foundation of what the cost is. They've mentioned it's the difference of adding more poles, which is understandable, and the redesign of adding five more footings. So, okay, what would that cost be? So now, up to, but maybe that's how we work it, is the language that it is up to, but provided that we're invoiced or whatever that language is. And it may come far short, but I think that they're just basically saying, like Elizabeth was saying, they want to recap the EIR, but if we have, we request that you provide us the invoice component and we work together because we do want to increase our, or better our relationship with them. Maybe there's a way to work that one.
That sounds fair.
And next, just a quick little question would be, anytime we have a conversation about money, if we come up with a number, we just publicly announce what our number is? Which, which is a very difficult negotiation, but to the negotiators and the subcommittee.
Why don't we talk about the process of money, all right? I think that if you're negotiating money, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, first off, there's a little bit of fact finding. So they've, they've issued contracts for buying certain poles and for, for drilling the holes and things like that. We should be able to understand what the cost, what the true cost is based on those contracts. So in addition to that, you and the city manager and Mike had offered them some other items that we can put a number on that, you know, so if it's, if it's a dollar figure that we were willing to waive and they say, no, we, we don't want to waive, we're happy to pay you, then we should know what that number is because money coming in is the same as money going out. It's still a wash. So we should understand what those numbers are. And then, and then from there, look at what a real number is as opposed to, you know, $200,000 is an awful round number and it just cannot be that. So I, I would do, I would strongly recommend that we go in armed with having done some homework where we know what their cost basis is. And then you can have a legitimate conversation. And then you know what you've also offered them already and what the value of that is that we could trade. And so that can change your number a little bit up or down to give you that flexibility.
So, not that I'm going to talk about negotiations, but I'm going to say that certain things may have been offered during the negotiations. But I think it's, look, it's a Bitcoin comment, oh no. It's cash, that was for you guys. It's like, if they want to make sure that it is a compensation component in cash, in other words, they want to pay as you go. They don't want to trade a dog for poles. They don't want to trade Bitcoin. They might trade Bitcoin for, but they might. But that being said, it, it truly is a cash, and that's why I'm trying to get everybody a little bit more focused. Because unfortunately, I, myself and George, we're in that component. So we know where we were, we're going. And I think that really their focus is, in order for this to even move, if I want to move this pond forward, which I do, is, it really is about money.
Well, perhaps you misunderstood what I was saying with regards to that item. We know what the value of what we would be charging them.
Yeah.
We have that in the back of our mind. We know what that component is going to be. So then if they say, you know, if we're, if we think our fact finding is, let's say for instance, here's $100,000 and we know that we were going to charge them $40,000 and they say, I need you to come up a little bit, you say $40,000, okay, 140 then. And you know that we're also going to be charging them the 40 while we're paying it. So we're paying with one and we're taking it with the other. So really, the out of pocket is only 100.
I get you.
Okay.
Absolutely. Rick, please, you, uh...
Okay, first, I, I just reread their demands and I'll correct my earlier statement. I'm pretty carried with what you said. I think we can address all of these demands with them. I would recommend that we put together a subcommittee and meet. And, and I think that the council could authorize providing them up to $200,000 of value. We, we can talk to them about how that is structured. And I don't think we need to get more specific on that.
Thank you.
Does that agree with them?
I think I'd go a slightly different way. I like the idea of getting a subcommittee and authorizing a conversation. And then I, I think what I would do is, is encourage the subcommittee to have the best deal the subcommittee can cut and then kind of come back for a final.
For a final.
Which can be done.
We have to have a special meeting.
Would have to be a special meeting.
Yeah, it would have to be.
No, that's not what we want, Mike, doesn't it?
I, I, there's no trust in that. The time is obviously of the essence and so we're really going to be up on a mark here if we want to try to get to a point. If the subcommittee has the ability to work up to, and you trust that Rick would be a good person to work up to that point as well as myself, we could work that as the point. If it goes to, I mean, discretionary call on calling a special meeting, but if it gets to a point where we feel like we're at a roadblock, we can call a special meeting and iron out those details in the special meeting. But we are running up against the wall related to timing.
It's a week from now.
It's a week. And we're going to, I mean, we've been working-
And next Wednesday, we're in Lakeview.
Right, and so we were working against a clock.
So we're all together anyway. Well, can't we manage to our agenda?
Well, posted at the airport. Now, okay.
We might have a real problem because you're there on a specific Brown Act exemption.
Oh.
If you do notice you before we go.
You write your letter.
All right. So there is a time clock issue. I, I would really like to work diligently to come up with a resolution. But I really, I really only think that the stumbling block, if we're comfortable with up to, if we feel it's, if I feel it's necessary, if staff feels that this is just, it's a stumbling block, then we'll call a special meeting. We'll comply with the law as much as, I mean, the law. See if we can, see if we can, I mean, if everybody's okay with that. I'm okay with calling a subcommittee, Rick and myself, if, if those two people are-
Sure.
Or I can delegate, but I just don't want to fall for this. If, good.
Well, you've done a super job so far.
Yeah, I really hope you'll say. You see the letter, right?
I appreciate that nice letter that they sent us.
I think it's because everybody else was touching it. I was feeling pretty good, but, all right.
Can I just clarify?
Please.
Require a special meeting or it only requires a special meeting if we can't come to agreement?
I think that it would require a special meeting if it looks like we can't get the, oh, the main, please.
I'm sorry, as I'm reading the, the package, it's, we're discussing and providing direction. So I don't know why we would need to do more than the next time we can provide direction. I don't know why we'd need a special meeting.
Well, if we're going to spend $200,000 or spend-
Hopefully less.
Less. But if you give up two, then there really isn't a need for a special meeting.
Yeah, but we don't want you cutting every number.
Well, that works.
Mr. Rick, there's something that you can't close the deal. It requires the city council vote on spending the $200,000. Now, you don't, you don't see, you won't have a problem. You can call a special meeting at any point in time in your negotiation if you feel it's necessary to, to get everybody to weigh in on the deal or two to authorize the approval of the $200,000 in cash.
So, so, in, we might have some degree of flexibility in the spirit if we commit to the 28th and we actually schedule a meeting after, if we run out of time. It really depends on availability. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to hope that we do a good job in negotiations. And then it necess, we will call a special meeting to do the final approval on the standing of the button. So if you're okay with that, then I'm okay with the subcommittee. And I would like to, since Rick is so talkative, I would like Rick to be my silent partner and help me. Rick, would you agree?
Okay, you're alternate on the Calm Auto.
That's right. I, he knows just as much about rail. All right, so if that's okay with staff, I'm sorry we couldn't just tell you we're, we're getting along, but we're working on it still.
This is probably out of order, but I'd like to thank you and applaud your-
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, very much. We're going to allow, if you want to step up, we're going to move on to the next item, which we're going back to 17. And please, everybody that was waiting for 17, thank you very much for being patient with us. Rick, with worry.
Worry, you were verbose.
Overtime. I'm worried about that. All right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 17, which is the Fire Fiscal Services Review, the second one. On this, provide reviews act and direction, senior director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You had a presentation at your last meeting on the biggest topic and took some public comment at that time. And you sent a letter out to the committee with basically bullet points of the results of the study. The consultants, the matrix consulting is here this evening to answer any further questions to council members or not, going to make a presentation again. You're here to answer any questions. You're also free to take public comment. You do have a number of letters corresponding to your stat report that came from residents and or other members of the public. So the action of staff looking forward is feedback on the study, Q and A, and any subsequent direction on the steps that the council would like to pursue. I can leave the stat report.
Wow, thank you, George. So, any members of council have questions related to item number 17, the Fire Fiscal Services? Don't jump all over the ones. You never get your public comment. We might be ready, but any questions? See, I was off guard. I think they had a question for Matrix. I will move on to public comments and I will think if I have that question, just to keep this going. Any members of the public have any public comments related to item number 17, which is the fiscal service review? Malcolm, please step up. And Jim, Jim, I regret, Jim asked, let's see if I can.
Malcolm.
And I got Malcolm too. Malcolm, you're up. Ponce.
Honorable mayor and members of the council. Having recently gone through the horror and devastation of the North Bay fires, we saw how quickly the devastation spreads across multiple communities. Emergency services' response is a combined effort of many communities working together for saving lives and the protection of properties. I agree that it makes sense to look at the fiscal aspects of this issue. But our top priority really should be the protection of lives and property and how best to accomplish that objective. The fire study provides some useful information, but it is seriously flawed. It covers the revenue the district receives from property taxes from Atherton residents, but it is deficient in identifying the true value of the services and benefits the town receives. One of the most important benefits to the town is not measured by the number of service calls, but rather is the protection we receive in times of area disaster being a part of the fire district. The study also fails to recognize that Atherton residents leave town borders and shop, work, go to school, play sports, and drive in areas within the fire district boundaries and actually benefit from the availability of the district services all outside of our town. It is tempting for the town to focus on saving money by detaching from the fire district. But in the long term, I feel this would be a very serious mistake. Having the very best emergency protection should be our top priority. There are many examples of institutions cutting costs on the earthquake insurance, for example, in order to save money, only to find that this had disastrous effects in a later time. For example, Stanford University in 1985 made the decision to drop their earthquake insurance. Their insurance premiums were large and based upon the fact that they had no earthquake expenses over the prior 79 years, they felt it made sense to drop this insurance coverage. They self-insured, establishing a reserve fund of 50, I'm sorry, of $7 million for future emergency repairs. Four years later, we were hit with the Loma Prieta 1989 earthquake. Self-insuring proved to be a very costly decision. The fire district study shows that Atherton residents provide 31.7% of the fire district's total property tax revenues. Prop 13 allocates property tax revenues based upon the percentages of the base year. The more affluent neighborhoods obviously pay more than the less affluent neighborhoods. But in times of catastrophic disasters like the North Bay fires, does anyone really ask how much more one neighborhood pays than another for their fire protection? For example, Coffee Park residents had roughly half the assessed valuation of Fountain Grove, $300 per square foot versus 600. The loss of property and lives hits everyone regardless of the home or amount paid for life, for fire protection. Disasters are not limited to city boundaries. We're all in it together. If Atherton were to detach from the district, the district would lose about a third of its revenues, which would necessitate a reduction in the level of fire protection for the remaining cities. Even if Atherton were not concerned about the impact upon our neighbors, hopefully we are, but even if we're not, there would be direct consequences for Atherton in the event of a large area-wide disaster. If Atherton were to detach, the study identifies Holbrook Park as the possible site for a fire station. I doubt that very many neighbors in that area would find that acceptable. The fire district would not be obligated to transfer any of its stations. So I urge the town to remain in the fire district. And I've been involved, as I had mentioned before, serving 23 years in LaFco and we made many studies of fire districts and the benefits in consolidation and, and those kind of issues. I also was on the council in 89 when we did have the, the earthquake, Loma Prieta. And it so happened that the vice president was Dan Quayle, flew out to Moffett Field. All of us on the community met, including Santa Cruz and Los Catos and Saratoga, who had major impacts. We didn't suffer it here, but you could see exactly what happens. And it's so critical. And it's fine to think, well, we have, you know, the ability to share and all. But if we take the position that we're really not concerned about what we do to other communities, which we would be if we detach and take that much revenue, I think that we would put ourselves in a bad position and I think it'd be a horrible mistake to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. Next speaker, please. Jim, please.
Wow, in the words of Yogi Bear, it's deja vu all over again. Malcolm, I have never been on the side of an issue for over 30 years and we still talk about it. I will not be as long as Malcolm. Here's my cut on this, this thing. The city of Atherton pays the Menlo Park Fire District for services, fire protection services, emergency services. Those are taxpayer dollars that are sent to the fire district. I don't think anybody in this room who goes to Costco or hires a contractor to work in our yard said, I have a lot of money, please charge me three or four times over what you would charge the guy next door. So, that's, my feeling is too, I believe it's the responsibility of the council as fiduciaries for the taxpayers of the town to overview this issue. And I thank you very much for taking this first step to look at that. I personally do not think having our own fire district is, fire department here in town is, would be the answer. The best answer would be if we could somehow work out the reallocations, which I think is pretty much impossible. So, my business partner and I ran a very successful computer business for over 20 years and we had a simple motto, when in doubt, contract it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other members of the public like to make a public comment on this? Seeing none, Bob? Like they asked? Oh, I just saw your green sweater and I says, geez, come on, let's see something. Thanks, Bob.
Bob Toledo from 83 Quail Court. Malcolm, I read your letter to the council and I listened closely to what she said tonight. And I don't know anybody that has more experience in these issues than you. However, quite frankly, the amount of money is staggering. And the amount of money the Menlo Park Fire Department spends is staggering. The budget for overtime last fiscal year was a million seven. They budgeted a million seven in overtime. I believe they had a dozen employees making over $300,000 a year. So the unintended consequences of Prop 13 are running amok there. And it's just too much money out of our pockets. Not five million or six million because we're, the report deals with some older numbers. It's going to be seven, eight, next year it'll be nine. It's, it's too much to ignore and I think we should explore what our opportunities are. And I agree with Jim, we don't really want a fire department, but we've got to do something.
Thank you, Bob. Any other members of the public, please?
My name is Alan Epstein. I sent you some questions and some comments about the change. I think the important things to remember is, is we're not unhappy with Menlo Park Fire District's performance. Currently, they provide excellent emergency services and fire protection. It is absolutely true that Atherton property owners pay more than anybody else for fire district services and probably pay more than anyone in the country for fire district services. This has come about because of Proposition 13, Assembly Bill 8, the fact that there's been no change in allocations in, in 20 years. This is nothing that the fire district has done, it's nothing that the council has done. This has come about because of Proposition 13 and Assembly Bill 8. I think it's true that Atherton could probably obtain adequate fire protection services in some other means. I don't agree with the concept of Atherton having its own fire department. I think it's been proven that larger regional fire departments are much more cost effective than small city departments. And more importantly, have the resources, expertise, and redundancies to deal with unpredictable events. Response to a fire for any home here would be more than two fire stations could respond. You couldn't even fight a fire with just two, two fire stations. Down in Los Angeles, there was a fire about two weeks ago in a 7,500 square foot building. 103 Los Angeles Fire Department personnel showed up for that fire. Property taxes aren't fair, we all know that. Two houses next to each other can be paid, be paying two widely different amounts of property tax. Sometimes we get more services, sometimes we get less. The change to the status quo and certainly the gentleman who served on LaFco knows is, is not going to be easy. The desired outcome of the town supposedly getting more money is not guaranteed. And it's likely that the money won't go to the town, it'll go, it'll go someplace else. LaFco has to be sure that the town has enough money to provide for adequate fire services as well as the existing fire district has enough money to provide for their services. There's also a question is what happens to the unfunded pension liabilities? Who's gonna, who's gonna pay for that? And where the location of fire stations are going to be? So there's no assurance that Atherton goes down this path, that it'll achieve the outcome that it wants. And I guess lastly, what I'll say is that us taxpayers are not going to pay $1 less. Money's not going to go back to the taxpayers. Money, if possible, is going to, is going to go to the town, as you all know. So, I think it's worthy to consider, but I think there are a lot of questions that are, that are definitely unanswered at this point in time. Good luck.
Alan, can you just, can I read this?
I live in Los Altos Hills, but I own property here in Atherton.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other members of the public have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring you back to council. And I'm going to look at, oh, not looking this way? This is the way it goes tonight.
It's ladies, it's ladies first.
Ladies night.
It's ladies night, ladies first night. You know, I made some pre-ferve comments because I wanted to make sure that I had things organized in my head. And it's going to sound a lot like what some of the public has said, but please bear with me. And there's one thing that I have said many, many times before, and I'm going to say it again, that I do not support Atherton forming its own fire department. And that I believe the Menlo Park Fire District provides a very high quality and excellent level of services to Atherton residents. I'm not dissatisfied with the fire district or want Atherton to leave the district. It's distressing to me that certain members of the fire district intentionally create fear and hysteria in our community through misinformation and twisting the facts in the social medias. I think that's abhorred. Atherton's contribution to the fire district's annual budget has grown exponentially over the years and is on track to continue to grow disproportionately to the needs of our town in the future. And this is simply because with the passage of Proposition 13, as our members of the public have alluded to long ago in 1978, set in 1980, a percentage of our property tax values was designated to ensure that Atherton could pay for its fire protection services. It's much like the library services. And so if Atherton's property values over the years, the property taxes had increased over time more modestly, I don't think anyone back in 1980 had any idea that Atherton's property taxes, the values, would skyrocket the way they did. Everyone has increased in value over time, but we have outpaced the norm. And so then the revenue would kind of be more in line with the services delivered. Sort of like Menlo Park's property values growing up, but ours had outpaced the norm. We have 2,500 parcels and I believe we provide 31% of the fire district's budget. Menlo Park has over 13,000 single-family parcels. That's not considering their commercial, their retail, and all that other stuff. And that's like five times what Atherton has. And its property tax revenue provides about 37%. So we're almost equal to what Menlo Park is providing. We only have 7,000 residents. Menlo Park has at least 35,000 to 40,000 residents and they're on track to grow 6% a year. Well, so what's the solution? Well, I know that having Atherton disengage and leave the district is not one of the answers. So what is the solution? The real answer is complex because it would require, as Mr. Epstein indicated, the California legislature to change the formula, that little percentage, to be more in line with what our property values are to meet the needs. And I realize that there's an old saying, you get what you pay for, but, and, and you know, we really, really, really get excellent fire service protection. Well, so does Menlo Park, so does San Mateo County, so does East Palo Alto. And they don't pay nearly the disproportionate amount. The reality is, is that the fire district would still be able to deliver excellent service without the excessive contributions from Atherton. They just wouldn't have as much extra money to play with, which is embarrassing. I mean, it's really, as the chair of our finance committee, Bob Toledo, said, it's incredible, the amount of money that they have. They have an enormous financial surplus and it's mostly because of Atherton's excess in contributions. And actually, they have little, if no, government oversight on how to manage or spend it. It's the fire board who makes the decisions. There's not an oversight body from the state level that governs them. So they get to play with all this money, all this. So they get to play with all this money all the time. And I'm gonna say it once more, so there's no misunderstanding. I think it would be foolish for Atherton to separate from the Menlo Park Fire District and form its own fire services. But I think we need to really look at this very, very hard and talk to our state legislatures, our senators, and figure out how we can recalculate and reset the contribution. Not so that it takes away from other jurisdictions, but so that the fire district just doesn't have so much excess. That's my feeling. The, the fiscal analysis, whether it's flawed or whether it's not, we tried to get this information from the fire district for over and over and over and they couldn't give it to us. And so I think that it's a good beginning. It shows us a lot of what's going on. It's not a perfect study, but we know we're paying too much. We know the fire district has an excessive amount of money. So what can we do but to separate? To go down that road through LAFCO process to literally separate, I'm, I am against doing that.
Thank you, Elizabeth. No.
So first off, I think we've said every time we had this discussion, under no circumstances are we saying the service that we're receiving from the Menlo Park Fire District is, is not appropriate and in fact, you know, the service is first rate, better than anywhere, however. You know, as, as been mentioned, Prop thirteen identified the rates that we were paying. And yet our property values have gone up, so have other communities. But what also has changed is if you drive around El Camino, you drive around East Palo Alto, is all the growth in these other areas. And that's where there needs to be some sort of adjustment. East Palo Alto recently has been deemed in the area as one of the fastest growing communities in the area and has something like a forty-three million dollar budget surplus. We don't have a forty-three million dollar budget surplus. If we did, we wouldn't have been a problem, we're two hundred thousand dollars. So, so, you know, we have to look at that and we have to take that into consideration. So if there was, first off, we did the study and it, it's come up with some surprising numbers. When we were asking questions about what the fire district was, whether they could have provided all the information or if it was, you know, kind of slow going, but, but then we went ahead and we had to put in a position of having to spend some money to get this information, you know, and I think that we should understand what we can do with this information. So not looking at the next steps to move the process along doesn't mean we have to take any of those steps. If in fact, we were to take any of those steps, you're right, we may not get any of that money, okay? And that wasn't the purpose, but maybe that money would be allocated to other surface areas that need it. The schools are regularly talking about, they don't have enough money to pay their teachers, okay? The, the Mesquita District has problems making their payroll and doing the things that they need to do. So LAFCO would look at all those things. So I think that, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the taxes that our residents are paid, you know, where they're going, how they're being, how they're being used and how they're being managed. And, and, and I think that we should, you know, continue the process to, to do that. But again, it doesn't mean that we're going to do anything. I'm not in favor of setting up my own fire district here in Atherton. I, I agree, it doesn't make any sense, but I do think the numbers are too big to ignore and we should at least take the next step, especially when you look at the salaries and where the costs are being spent over there. So I think it's, it's important that we, we continue down the path and we have the discussion. I, like Elizabeth, am appalled with some of the scaremongering and, and horse rhetoric that has come from certain people over either with responsibilities in the district or on the board. I just don't think that those were appropriate. We should be working together to, to try and get answers to problems and, and to make sure all taxpayer dollars are being spent appropriately. So those are my comments, thank you.
Rick?
I have three comments. First, I, I appreciate the public comment that we got tonight. I heard from a number of people over the last two weeks who were reluctant to comment and say anything that might be not critical of the fire district, but critical of the tax situation because they were fearful that their service might be adversely impacted if they expressed a desire or a recommendation to leave the fire district. And I just wanna say, I think that's absolutely wrong. I'm glad to hear what we heard tonight. I, I think this is an extremely professional fire district. There is absolutely no way that this fire district would change their service. They're gonna respond to every service need, whether it's fire or medical, and, and I believe they're gonna do an excellent job and they have done an excellent job. So I really appreciate the public comment. Secondly, I wanna reiterate the comments that both Elizabeth and Bill said. I think that those comments that have been in the press from the prior president of the fire board are absolutely unprofessional. He has charged that our looking at this issue was an attempt to quote steal and quote their tax dollars. And I think that not only is it wrong, it's not possible. We couldn't take their tax dollars. So if we wanted to, the tax dollars go with the service. And if the, if their LAFCO were to make a decision to change, here my understanding is that after the allocation of the expense that would be necessary, the excess tax dollars would ultimately go to the county and be redistributed. And it's not Atherton's job to deal with that. We don't need it, I think that was the wrong way to address the issue. I think it should have been discussed in a collaborative way and I'm really disappointed that it wasn't. I think that, you know, everybody wants to get value from the taxes that we pay and we pay very high taxes in Atherton. The inquiry that Atherton launched was done because we wanted to provide our residents with a comprehensive assessment of the services that we receive as residents in Atherton. That was a task that the staff took on, discussed with council and that the council supported and I think it was the right thing to do. We weren't able to get the information that we needed around the fire piece of that and the, and the service cost from the fires that we took on a study ourselves. And I think that that was the right thing to do. I, I think it's responsible to our residents and it doesn't imply that, and, and at no point have we indicated that there was an interest from this council, at least that I've heard, to leave the fire district. And I think that's been reiterated tonight. You know, I, the issue for me is what do we do now that we have this information? I agree with some of the comments that have been made about the amount of taxes that we as homeowners in this town pay. But these tax, this tax amount is a function of Prop thirteen and it's true. The way you change that is you have to go to the legislature. And, you know, maybe, maybe we should do that, but I don't frankly see that as our job. I think that our job is to make sure that our residents get the best possible service that they can get. And I believe we are getting the best possible service we can get from the fire district that we have. That's not to say that we couldn't get good service from an outsourced fire district. There is no doubt it would be cheaper. We looked at that with respect to police services and we made a very intentional decision. This council made that decision, that we don't want to outsource police services. And we're paying for the kind of service, the quality of service that we get and the relationship that we have with the individual officers. You know, I, the way I look at it, our council has its hands full with the biggest project in the history of this town. And this, this is a project that just takes an enormous amount of time and it's only begin. It's been going for five years and it's only begin. It's the most expensive project by more than a hundred and eighty that this town has ever taken on and we have to do right by it. I don't believe that we have the time or that our staff has the bandwidth to manage either fire services directly offered or outsourced where we would have responsibility or proceeding through a whole LAFCO process. Now at some point, we might decide we wanna do that. But my, my position is that this is not the time to take that on. I think this is the time to really focus on this project that we've launched from the town and be responsible to the residents to make sure that we do the best possible job with this. And it's a full-time job to do it right.
Mike? So I agree with lots of what my fellow council members have said in, in different couple places. I'll just point out, one, I do think we receive fine fire service protection. I think it's an issue of the quality of fire services we're receiving. Although I'll point out that the, there is an opportunity cost for the amount of money that makes you have fire services. And so to the extent in which we are overpaying for a fire service, there is something that's not getting done. And we don't have control entirely over what that is. It's not getting done because we have to go through a process, LAFCO process or other processes in terms of what that is. But in my view, it's very clear that we are overpaying for fire services. And I say that, and that we as Atherton residents are overpaying. But I also think that bureaucracy's doing what they are. When revenues go up significantly, bureaucracy to expand to spend that revenue. And I think that's been going on for quite some time and that's how you end up with, you know, the highest paid public sector employees in, in the state and maybe in the nation working in the, the fire district area. And we have individuals who are earning over, I think we've heard a dozen individuals earning over three hundred thousand dollars a year. That's, that's pretty spectacular salary. That by the way, would be just salary, not including your other benefits, which would, which would put that with a higher number. That's that one. And, and so I think it would be irresponsible for us not to, to look at it. I think we do have fiduciary duty to act on behalf of Atherton residents where we can. So in, in my view, the, the next step would be to learn what our options are. And I actually would not put limits on that. I just don't feel expert enough to, to say that these things aren't a good idea or are a good idea. The limits I'd put on is we clearly aren't gonna do anything that would put public safety at risk, right? So there'd be, we absolutely have to maintain a very high level of, of emergency service protection. Beyond that, at this point, I'd like to know what those, what alternatives there are and have a discussion about, about those. As far as timing, I think this is a very long process. And, and I think it, it's a journey that, that, you know, we, we started and I think we should continue down this path. I think it will be years till this works itself out. But I think every day we delay it is a, is a, is a day that, you know, again, there's actually a cost to that delay. As I've pointed out a couple of times, what is now a seven million dollar figure will, will at some point be a ten or eleven or twelve million dollar figure. I'm not talking about a hundred years from now, it's about in the relative near future, you can see that coming. So I think that the, the time to look at it is now. And I would, I would be in favor of, again, learning what our options are, what the process is and, and having an open discussion about, about those steps. That's right.
Thank you, Mike. This is obviously a very serious issue for the town and it's a very serious issue for my colleagues and myself. Emergency services are something that the community has always supported. This issue, my colleagues have mentioned certain things related to costs for the district, salaries for the district. Mr. Polito's mentioned some things and they've been adequately reported in the newspaper. And frankly, all those things are offensive, that you're the most expensive department, but it's not something that in fact the town can control. It's a commodity that is controlled by the fire district board and those costs and escalations are keep, getting higher and higher and higher. There's never gonna be enough people and with all the growth in the fire district and it's four jurisdictions. So you've got the Facebook component that's putting fifty thousand plus people out in the Facebook component. You've got East Palo Alto that has just approved five times, five projects with more project bandwidth than East Palo Alto's ever seen. And you've got San Mateo County that has done equally the same in the unincorporated zone. And then you've got the town of Atherton, that our service and our growth has been pretty consistent for the last twenty years and our general plan says it's gonna stay the same. So there are concerns where the escalating costs start going crazy. And remember, as a partner in this, we're also absorbing some of those escalated costs. The town of Atherton, over the last few years, has asked the district, you know, hey, well, can you provide ambulance service? Because we have heard during a disaster drill that we would be blocked off and a large percentage of our responses in this town were emergency medical related. So we said, hey, again, the district cannot provide ambulance services 'cause it's not an option for them. Then we said, hey, wait a minute, we have one station in town, although they do provide responses based on the district's model, multiple jurisdictions, multiple stations. We said, hey, how about providing a smaller version, quicker response medical unit into the civic center? You pay for whatever you want and just design it into the component. At that time, the district was doing a review on services for the district by city gate. Page said, we'll add that into the conversation with our consultant. The town wasn't consulted on what the scope of work was, but they put it into their scope of work. Nor will we, as it's been said repeatedly, they have not had an opportunity to be involved in this 'cause this is not their report, the matrix component. But they did have an opportunity to provide information to the consultant, related to questions and so on and so forth. And the district did provide information into this report. It may not be a perfect report as far as the district's concerned, but it's a baseline. And there may be flaws or there may be additional considerations, like plenty of residents have called me and said, what is the cost per capita? Tell me. And so some of my, some of the residents have actually called and said, do you know what the cost per capita is? And I said, well, we see it's in the report, must be, because you're asking, so it must be here. And it isn't. But cost per capita, the town of Atherton is sixteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars per call. Menlo Park is five hundred and seventeen dollars per call. East Palo Alto, seventy dollars per call. In the unincorporated county, three hundred dollars per call. There's three times the cost we're paying, three times is our closest partner, which is Menlo Park, which identifies another factor, it's disproportionate. So drill down and where do we go? I think you've heard, most of my colleagues, all of my colleagues have said, well, we're not interested in creating our own fire station. But we also have to understand that the district doesn't control, they cannot do anything for us. They could not negotiate the money that they receive. They're not responsible to us, although they do provide service, but it's not part of the process. They don't set that target number. I did have the fortunate shame that Alan had provided me that he made contact with Martha Pios with LAFCO. She identified the entire process and I think that we included in the council report, which identified, thank you Alan, for that contact. And we've had contact with her over the years because this is not something that's normal. Why would you wanna withdraw or consider withdrawing from a district? Because when you are in a district, the benefits are the consolidation of services makes your costs cheaper. Well, actually that's not working for us. Our costs are more expensive with consolidation and that's not what consolidation means. One of my former mayor here mentioned it as a member of LAFCO. LAFCO's, one of that main focus point is the consolidation of services because it's about giving the taxpayers the best benefit for the dollar that you can possibly get. San Mateo County traditionally, historically had every jurisdiction with their own services. Fire station, fire station, fire station, each city, nobody wanted, because everybody wanted to control it. But the cost of doing business is so expensive, there are only two jurisdictions in this county that have their own standalone fire station, San Bruno and South San Francisco. Everybody else has done consolidation. They didn't do consolidation 'cause it was more expensive. They did consolidation because one, they established local control, two... one, they established local control, two, they got cheaper costs, they were able to balance all the overhead and all these managers. That is not what's going in a district like the Millau Park Fire District with growth. They're getting, they're bifurcating the district, their work's not mine, their eastern section of the district is huge, I mean, that's a huge amount of development, we're hearing about all traffic issues, but what does that mean for us? They, their board has said, hey, what do you guys want? Well, we don't want anything because you can't give us anything. They don't have the ability to negotiate the costs and fees. We have no choice but to go into a process that is not controlled by us, the LAFCO process is secondary process, just to get to the stage where we can say to the taxpayers of Atherton, the tax, taxes that you pay can be renegotiated through the LAFCO process, but we can't go to the Fire District and say, hey, you know what, we're unhappy, we're paying too much, you know, would you cut us back something, reduce it, send it back with the tax, then write a new check? That cannot happen. No negotiations can occur between the town of Atherton and the district. That's why this is complex, because you'd think you could. In a JPA agreement that the city was responsible for, we could do that, and every year we'd get a budget, we'd see the numbers, and they say, the fire department says, hey, we want a raise, we say, no, it's 1%, not 4% like you want. So, that's what the negotiations would be if we had a JPA, and that's what is being debated, and not, not a special district. There are only two special districts in San Mateo County, the Ingle, and that is the Woodside Fire District and the Millau Park Fire District. So, there's two special districts. One comment on neighboring jurisdictions and service. Everybody out there's a good fire, fire department, they provide good service, they all have programs, they all do a lot of things. The Millau Park Fire District does a little bit different because they have more money than most, so they can do more things, they have more toys than most. Councilwoman Lewis mentioned maybe, there's a reason why. When you have more money, you can have more toys if you can get the approval to give. A comment related to, the, the, the fact is, is if there was a disaster in Atherton, and there was a comment related to the incident we had with something on the railroad tracks, if there's a need for more services, this county has a mutual aid to help them, the services would be here. Everybody works together, everybody in the county, if there was a major event, and on top of that, there's the Office of Emergency Services through San Mateo County. If it's such a large-scale event, then the county has the ability with county resources, and by the way, we pay for that, too. That's another contribution that the town, as a member of the county, pays into that, and we are members of emergency services, so, oh yes, excuse me, so, that's another factor. So, it's a tough position to be in because we're not talking about how the district responds to its residents. What we're talking about is the amount of money and that gap is getting greater and greater. It's never going to be a good time, but this has got to be a better time than five years from now when the district has got such large growth, and our level is going to be constant, but their margins are going to get bigger, and then we're going to be responsible for more employees, more apparatus, more equipment, and everything else, that in essence, it'll make it so that the town of Atherton can never make a decision, and we are going to be stuck into a system that we're overcompensating the district a large amount of money. So, if we think it's bad now, it's only going to get worse, and, again, our level of service is most likely predictable, pretty comparable to what it is, which is, right now, less than 10% of the district's service cost. So, that's a pretty scary, there's not a whole lot of service, so what are we really talking about? How many service calls are we really talking about? It's not a lot of service, we don't expect it to increase greatly, but that's a lot of money for a low-volume service, so if we were to consider a neighborhood, or consider to get to a point where we could get to a negotiation with the Fire District and say, hey, we're paying too much, and they say, hey, we can provide, and it's up to them, we can provide it to you for X, and then another jurisdiction said, well, we can provide it to you, it's competitiveness that's going to make it fair to the taxpayer. When you heard the comments related to the reallocation component, there's never been an expectation that we were going to come in and sweep up all the money that the Fire Districts gave. But what we did say is that it's not responsible for us, that the taxpayers are not receiving, the taxpayers of Atherton are not receiving the benefit of what they're paying into the district, and therefore, that money should be reallocated proportionately to whatever the services are that benefit the taxpayer that is paying that tax. So, I think that's kind of where, it's been a long journey even to this point, and again, and I know the district has said, well, what can we, they can't, that's really not a discussion because they can't provide us anything that's not in their business model. Their outlined business model says there's absolutely no need for anything in Atherton, other than we heard, which is not in their business model, the purchase of the almond drawlot, that was not in their business model, but it, it's here, but it's not something that they anticipated, and we don't know if there's any plans for 20 to 30 years for that. They've got it, they're holding it separately, it's not as if they're going to go out and pop a fire station on it, so. So, we're, so it's an investment, and actually, they're treating it as such. So, I'm sitting in the position where I believe we have to get involved into a process. I believe that we have to do it for the benefit of the taxpayer. I think that there is a two-pronged component because there is a legislative issue, and there is a tax code issue here that allocates the component, the failure. The legislative issue could be as simple, you know, our legislature in Sacramento could say, yeah, you're right, that number is off, and this doesn't work, let's change it. But the LAFCO process is the process that we're responsible to go through, and it does have to get people to the table, and the language is the detachment, and I know the word doesn't mean that we leave, but it even get them at the table, and we're not even the ones to do the negotiation. The county, the LAFCO process, it's the county court, and it's the county board and the district do the negotiations. We're not even the negotiator. So, I mean, that's an interesting part, why wouldn't the town be in it, right? No. LAFCO's process is, they'll do the negotiations for it based on what they believe a responsible price is for service, and if the Fire District would agree to it, then we'd be in the same issue we're in today, just paying less in a different allocation.
I think we are in the negotiations, it's the county on behalf of the Fire District, not on behalf of the town.
Thank you. I have too much paperwork in front of me, you know, a long day. So, I believe that we have to get involved in this process, I don't believe that, I mean, the process itself may take lon, longer than I would, I would think that it should, being a process that, it's an unfamiliar process to most people, because I'm not sure the answer to this, but I don't think there's a precedent for getting out of a Fire District or any special district in itself. So, we are, we would be creating a cultivation ground, but I think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to do so. So, it may be wrong, but somebody else will also think it's, they should think it's wrong because where are the benefits coming to the town, the taxpayers of Atherton? So, I think that we should be involved in the process and move forward as far as, do we need to move into Phase Four, is that a Process Four, or?
Well, it depends on the council, as you give the direction this evening to go back to the consultant and investigate what Task Four looks like, what that cost would be, I could return that to you, or if you're within my signature authority, I could.
Can we, can we, can we explain a little bit more what Phase Four really involves? I know, you know, it's a new day, and Phase Four, I'm a little rusty on, can you tell me a little bit about Phase Four? Did you?
I don't think we.
They all know?
It was, it's purely exploring all of the options available for the town.
All right. And laying out the process. And laying out the process. So, I personally see no harm in that, I think that, are all of us, or is it going to be four of us, or is it going to be three, two, five, one?
You know, personally, I, I am not ready to go into the Phase Four of this at this time. I'd like to have more time to have us as a council discuss it without getting the consultant involved to lay out like the LAFCO scenario that Mr. Epstein did with Martha Potus, and I just think that, 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 that's not what I'm ready to embark upon right now.
Hey, Rick, are you of the same line of thinking?
I'm trying to understand, I, I have not read the information on LAFCO. It was not part of the study.
Yeah.
If you want to make a decision about going for a LAFCO, oh, no, I think it's absolutely the wrong thing for us to do.
I think so, yeah.
But I think that it would be worthwhile for us to look at, I mean, I'd like to see a report on how long it would take, what the costs would be, how much time it will take for staff.
Yeah, I, I was thinking this.
And, I mean, I, I think the staff has its arms full.
So, George, as Mike was mentioning, Bill was mentioning, saying, involved in what that process is, is that something that?
Well, Task Four isn't approaching LAFCO and writing down the LAFCO process. Task Four is saying, here's what the LAFCO process looks like in detail, here's how much time it would involve, here's the staff time or potential town involvement in it, as well as various legislative solutions, or some other out-of-the-box solutions to address the issue of the fiscal inequity.
So, just giving us the information that we all said we want to go, we're not making any decisions.
Decision, it's just a direction, is that, that's pretty much a consensus of everybody who mentioned that, that's reasonable, and.
Well, it's at least a consensus of three.
Three?
What, what is the proposal?
George, explain.
The proposal is Task Four, to engage the consultant with, to do Task Four, which is not to start a LAFCO process, it is purely to have a consultant outline what that process looks like, what the timeline involves with LAFCO, as well as define for the town what other solutions or options might be, whether they be legislative or negotiated or whatever other.
Does that sound reasonable?
I have a question. How, how do we know that this consultant has all of that knowledge to, to kind of figure all that out? I'm, I'm just not convinced that, you know, I think, I'm not convinced that the consultants would have that breadth to look at all the different options.
Well, they, they are here, we can ask them if they have any feedback on that.
If we can use the discretion of asking the consultant, does that sound, anybody want to, this is the day that nobody stands up, so, anybody that wants to stand up, I'd greatly appreciate it. Anybody wants to jump on the hot seat?
Good evening, I'm Richard Brady, I'm the president of Atrius Consulting Group, and I was the project manager on the portion of the project that we just completed. So, just addressing the question about do we have the experience and the capability to look at this question, some of us in our firm, myself included, go back to the immediate Proposition 13 phase of California, and from about 1980 until the present, have been involved in special district and fire service reorganizations across the state that have included splitting up of special districts, like the Salinas Rural Fire Protection District, and the creation of other special districts, like the Castro Fire Protection District, and looking at consolidation of municipalities, as well as municipalities with districts in about 25 or 30 studies over the past 35 years.
And just a second.
Well, it doesn't answer my question about the legislative.
What are legislative options?
It's, the legislature only has itself limited options on this because it's a constitutional issue, Proposition 13 is.
California Constitution.
That's right.
So, how can they address Atherton?
I'm not sure that they can.
We talked to Jerry Phillips about that at WOOP, and he was unclear.
So, just, so I, I think what I'm suggesting is that we find out as much as we can about all these options, rather than, you know, guess about what the answer might be, because if somebody can give us information that's researched and thought, at least we'll have a more informed decision.
Exactly, further discussion.
Yeah. I agree with that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks for jumping on the hot seat. Do you want us to vote, or?
No, it's just a direction, and I've got three, at least.
That's a consensus, so, so let's take this item and move on. Need anything else? So, let's move to item number, apologize, sometimes we're a little unorganized, but we actually are, number 19. So, can we go ahead and have, this is item number 19, review and provide comments to approve a 2018 Earth Day event work plan, budget, and recommendations to the Environmental Programs Committee, EPC. George?
Stephanie. Excuse me. Thank you, Stephanie Davis, planning department. So, tonight, we are asking the council to please consider a 2018 Earth Day work plan and budget as recommended by your Environmental Programs Committee, just a summary of what's detailed in the staff report. The EPC envisions this 2018 Earth Day event to include a film screening of a film entitled The New Fire, to be either preceded and/or followed by a panel discussion of relevant experts. The event itself is, or purpose of the event itself, I should say, to provide an educational component to the community on matters related to climate change. Excuse me, it's hot.
You want some water?
I had to sort it out, but I'm good, thank you. So, again, the film, the intent of the film is hopefully to help educate our community and our residents on some newer approaches that professionals in this field are working towards, towards addressing climate change and developing newer efforts of clean energy. Additionally, beyond the work plan and budget proposed before you tonight, as recommended by the Environmental Programs Committee, staff is also looking for some feedback from the council on how you would like to envision the future action items of your Environmental Programs Committee for the remainder of this year. Currently, our EPC is slated to work on developing implementation approaches on the town's climate action plan, or the, those greenhouse gas reduction measures that the town has adopted in reducing their carbon footprint. We still have more work to do in that arena, and then, of course, if the council does approve the work plan and budget for a town Earth Day event, the EPC would continue their efforts in assisting staff in facilitating such an event. So, happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Anybody, any questions?
No, I have a question.
Bill?
Thank you. I guess, two, two questions. So, I saw the proposed budget for Earth Day, which is, you know, 3,000, it was kind of wrong, and, and the fact that, as opposed to having any part of the event at the park or where we can kind of control and make some in-kind contributions, everything is over at school, which I would assume that the school is going to charge us for janitorial, opening the facility up, I mean, do you have their input?
We have tentatively secured the date on Earth Day weekend, which will be either Saturday, April 21st, or Sunday, April 22nd. There's no cost associated with that permit, it's a civic permit. The cost of the, as broadly presented in the budget, primarily would be slated towards covering the cost for the film screening itself. A lot of the efforts will be voluntary or donated. Excuse me.
Well, that was 3,000, there was 2,000, so, so there was no, there's no cost from the school district, from the boy's school district?
To rent the facility or to operate.
Or using the facility, or cleaning up, or setting out, and things like that. Okay, secondly, when we did the budget, we put $5,000 in for EPC work, is my understanding, my remembrance. And so, the other activities that you mentioned, so how, how are they going to be funded if we're spending all the money on the Earth Day?
So, the efforts of implementing the climate action plan, greenhouse gas reduction measures, those funds are from the staffing resource perspective and working with the EPC on bi-monthly meetings, and those are to be low-cost or no-cost efforts.
Okay. All right. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Rick? So, starting with the Earth Day function, in reading the staff notes, reference to the EPC requested the ability, committee members at future meetings to, by direction, staff on environmental topic, what exactly is the request there? I just want to try and understand.
Well, my take from the discussion that we had at the last meeting is that the EPC would like to be involved with more matters that would touch at a broader base than what they currently have been working on directly, which is simply the climate action plan, I would say, and any Earth Day event on an annual basis. So, matters pertaining to improvements to the Atherton Drainage Channel, for example, matters pertaining to, there was a comment raised on recycling components that the town is currently studying.
So, specifically, what would that require from the council? Would that be amending the EPC charter, or would that be? Would that be amending the EPC charter, or would that be...
Yes, well...
I'm saying, yes.
Well, so, let me just kind of add a little color to that. The Environmental Programs Committee kind of started out as the Waste Reduction Committee, a long time ago. For instance, when we were looking at, doing the waste management contracts, that was first brought to the EPC to kind of figure out, you know, what does Atherton want as far as recycling and this and that. I'm going back a long time, and so, then, so, i- issues, for instance, like the, the drainage, stormwater detention, to have them at least weigh in on that, because it's, it's really an environmental deal, and, you know, bring back, to council, a, their opinion or their recommendation, not to do anything, but just to kind of be involved. Sort of like with the Transportation Committee, you know, kind of wants to see and stuff.
I'm still, I got two, if, if, if it's not in the charter, we can amend it with, with...
The charter says make recommendations to the council upon request on all matters. So, if you want them specifically, look at them, request.
I will please, Bill, a question.
So, are they precluded from showing up and making a comment at a council meeting when we're looking at something, as far as public, public comments, where they would have the chairman come speak on behalf, or designated person on behalf of that to make a comment, as other committees do?
They can send a designated representative to speak on issues related to environmental programs, but they can't send, you, you either are a committee member, or you're not. And you cannot be a quote, "member of the public" and just get up and make a comment when you're a committee member. But if they're asked by the committee to go and represent them on an environmental issue that they see is something, then yes, that spokesperson can go do that.
And that would mean that the Environmental Programs Committee would have discussed that topic prior to the council meeting, and authorized a representative to come and...
As the city manager pointed out, that does literally violate the charter. The charter says, the EPC responds to requests from the city council to weigh in on environmental issues.
Right, right.
I have a question. Isn't it true that at every committee meeting, just like at the council, there's an agenda item regarding future agendas? And anybody on a committee can ask about putting anything on the agenda, just like we can at the council, it doesn't mean it happens, but...
There, there is a process that we have in the Resolution fifteen dash ten, may have been updated, but...
That's correct, fifteen dash ten.
Fifteen dash ten, and it says how the, the agendas prepare, and the...
Page two, the top of page two?
Yeah, page two of thirteen, staff and committees, but it talks about how to do it, and quite frankly, I haven't remembered, there's certainly, they can be added to the agenda following an agenda preparation meeting, et cetera. So, they can add items to the agenda, the, the problem is the conflict here with the charter, which is pretty specific, it said that they can only comment on the things. They can add something to the agenda if the city council has asked them to look at it. They don't have to put it on a particular agenda. Now, for instance, if they meet once a month, they could maybe have agendas that are pretty full, and they add it on the third month out, something like that. But, it's, it's easy matter to amend the charter, if that's something we feel is holding up, it's a resolution, so... And we, we amended, we amended...
Uh, I have a quick question. Maybe I'm missing something. This is a movie screening, the, the cost, I think, if I read correctly, was three thousand dollars. The total day event is five thousand, correct?
Three thousand dollars is preliminarily slated to just cover the cost of the film screening itself, and then the remaining monies would be to help supplement whatever other activities would be conducted, such as the panel interview, if we needed tables, refreshments, advertising and marketing materials.
So, that's a little different than we did last year, because I don't, we do a panel and everything last year?
No, no, it's, it's definitely a, a different approach in an event. The EPC did discuss that, and they wanted something a bit more substantive and direct topic related.
Two years ago, we did have a screening, and we had a Skype with the filmmaker, and it was at the PAC, how, the Performing Arts Center, and it was very, very well received. It was, and we had only, I think, a couple of weeks to really get the message out, because we were behind the, the gun, and I think that this topic is compelling, and there are a lot of residents in Atherton interested in this topic, and one of our own Atherton residents helped fund the production of it. Many of you know Ross Cunninghamstein, and he will be a part of the panel, and we have a panel discussion. I, I really think that this is something that we can really put together. We realized that trying to put the big student challenge together was another problematic, because we didn't have the time, and all the AP classes, and the, you know, other tests, they, it kind of conflicts, and we can't get the teachers to promote it. So, to do that big student challenge, and it, it, we need more money to entice the high schoolers to actually work on this, to get money, to get the prizes, to get them, because they, they are very motivated with that, and we just don't have that type of budget.
Thank you, any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and ask, any other of the others might bring for the comment on this topic. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close up the topic, and be back to council, fine, I'll be back. Bill, please.
First off, I looked at the trailer, I think that, I agree with the comments. The, the film looks extremely worthwhile, very timely, and it looks like it's quite well done, so, so I applaud it, maybe for finding that, and, and offering it to people. So, with regards to the Earth Day event, I'm comfortable with doing this. I think it's, it's going to be well attended, and I think that, my only question was, you know, we could, if we did something in the park, I thought that that would be worthwhile as well, especially since we're having the trash pickup and the, the other activities that are associated with it, compost giveaway, et cetera, on the same, same timeframe, but, but we can go ahead and direct people over.
Through the chat. Can, can I just comment on that? The EPC has talked about having something later in the year, in the early fall, with the kids in at the park, to have more, so, we would have more time to plan something.
Okay, well, we've already, we've, for, for the shred event, and the, the...
Understand.
Yeah, we've already scheduled those.
No, no, I understand, that would not be combined.
So, with regards, are we talking just about...
You were talking.
Okay, okay. So, I think a lot of what the town does, almost everything the town does, you could consider has an environmental component to it, and so, perhaps we need to think further about referring things, and making sure, like we do with the Transportation Committee, because the, the representative on that committee brings up, hey, don't you think the Transportation Committee should look into that, or don't you think the real committee should look into that? So, I, I think that the advocates on the council need to make sure that we're doing our job and making sure that we're leveraging the best information. Having a car wash, I'm not so sure is, is, isn't what we had envisioned when we put things together. So, I, I, I'm, I'm not as comfortable with having a car washed, without the referral, and I think there were some other words in there, where it says that, at the end of the meeting or beginning of the matter, that might have any sort of potential impact. I just don't see that we're held to a standard that says, you know, by the Brown Act, it says that if we want to talk about something, we, we put it on the agenda so everybody knows we're going to talk about it. And, yes, we have the opportunity to listen to the public and say, well, hey, you know what, city manager, we'd like to see a future action item or a future item on the agenda, please schedule that in the future. But, but we don't just break down and start having those discussions. And the way I read this, is that the committee would actually have greater flexibility than the council does, and I, I don't think that that's, that's appropriate at this time, so...
I don't think that was the intention.
Okay, well, that's how I read it, based on the words, so... But my, so, so my comment is, I'm a hundred percent behind the, the Earth Day event, and if you have a secondary thing, I, I would be supportive of that. I, I think that we should maintain and be more vigilant about asking the EPC participate in, in giving us their opinion about the non-see car blocks, or anything that would violate the, the, the Brown Act.
Thank you.
I, I have, I love it. Rick? Uh, I agree with Bill's comments regarding the film, I think the trailer was exciting, and I think we'll, I'm interested in seeing the film, and, and the discussion around it. I think that, I agree that you could, anything can be environmental, and, you know, we have advisory committees in specific areas for a reason, and I think, for example, transportation has huge environmental impacts in Atherton, we talk about it all the time, and that's why we have Transportation Committee. I think there probably are things that are appropriate for EPC to review and advise us on that we haven't thought about referring to them. And I, and, and I want a mechanism that helps us do that. Like, I think about all the work that we did on the Civic Center around environmental-related stuff. I mean, this, this Civic Center could be the first zero-methane energy Civic Center in California, and the library is going to be zero-methane energy, that, that whole concept was never really run by EPC, and it probably would have been a good thing to do, I, I didn't think about it. So, I'd like to have a mechanism that enables that, but isn't, you know, so broad that we're getting comments in areas which aren't helpful. Maybe the way to do it is to enable the EPC to suggest things to us that they comment on, and we can then decide if that's something that would be helpful to us. Uh, that, that's in an environmental area, because we recognize it's pretty far off.
Please, I, I, actually, in, in, thinking about what Councilman Riddick was saying, if there is an item that comes before the council, that is viewed before the council, that hasn't had an opportunity for any community input or not, we can add a section in the staff report that says, committee referral, list our committees, and the council can decide which committees you would like this issue reviewed by at the time we're looking at the issue.
That sounds great, I like that idea.
Well, you, you should make a, a guess, don't list them all, okay?
Yeah, right.
We only have like five, so it's not a huge list, but...
Because, because if you wait for the Environmental Programs Committee to come back and say, oh, I want to look, of course, it's already left the mark.
Right, but one thing we want to recognize is when you do that, when you add...
That's, I know, that's a certain... Some of them meet every, some of them meet every other month, and then we're waiting for two months to make a decision.
Mike?
No, I've got, I, I agree with the concept, and I'll pull back, but I've been sorry about time element. So, if I could, I saw The New Fire, I've not seen the trailer, and that's, falls on me, I'm sure it's a good movie, I look forward to seeing it, you know, that, that the trailer. I don't, I like the fact that you were there, and I think this seems like a reasonable good Earth Day. The one thing that I would recommend is to, to continue to make sure that we have an Aspen connection to it, I'm glad there's an Aspen investor in this one, but I like having some local connection to what we're doing. The last couple we've done, I think, have been big global issues, and I like to make sure that, you know, people here are, are buying in and feeling connected from what we're doing here, so now I'll give that piece of feedback, how's that? As to the role of the Environmental Programs Committee, I agree that, that a broad, the broad one that's sort of vague isn't, isn't really helpful, that we do need to figure a way to, to tap a lot of smart talent people that know, you know a lot of this area, and care of this area. I, I don't want to slow things down, so I'm looking for something in between, I don't know how we...
The council will get to decide, so if the issue does have lead time, you can assign it to a committee, if not, you retain control.
All right.
Mr. Mayor? If the city are reading this, there are incredible ambiguities in our own resolution. As, it does say that, for instance, if the, if the EPC had an issue, and maybe something the council was talking about, they could put it on their own agenda, they even have the ability with the colleagues, you know, to put it on their own agenda, but I would think the only way that that would make sense with the, what their charter says would be then to ask the city council, can we look into and comment on this issue? So, we can look into this at staff level a little better, this is, you know, kind of caught me off guard because I thought we were just talking about the EPC and what they were going to do, but this applies to a number of other charges committees as well, where it says, upon request from the city council, but then they also have some areas of their own expertise where they can act on their own without a request from the council.
Thank you. I think that clearly the, the film's going to be a good name, I think the secondary, I don't think, I think it takes more staff attention to iron up the little details, and that can be brought back to us. I don't think it needs more action. Um, let's move on to item number twenty, which is to provide feedback on the Millfield Road, class two bicycle lanes, improvements to projects, sixty-five percent plans, and...
So, the science that, we're going to provide, basically just show the sixty-five percent?
Right.
As you, as a slower, okay. My name's Nadia Bozam, I work with the Interwest Consulting Group, just consultant for the projects, I'm the project manager for the Millfield Road Bicycle Lanes Project, so...
Can I ask you, what type of timeframe do you have on these days?
This is literally just showing what's in front of you, so it could be five minutes. If you have any specific questions, I can go to those.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Let's move a little bit microfilm up there. Five minutes or less.
Okay, sounds good. So, I was going for the first sheet, do you have any specific questions after reviewing the sixty-five percent plans? I know that you asked about the buffer lanes between Encinal and...
I didn't have this in mind, actually.
Oh, no, that copy you're feeding.
Do you want to look at mine?
I had it on my eyes.
I had nothing. No, it's just, just...
Oh, we didn't get it happening.
Oh, not the presentation, it's just literally this actual plans, so it's, it's just sheets one, L one to L sixteen, so that there's a close-up in front of, so the public can also see it, so it's not different from the plans.
Okay, so we're a little blind, but that's okay. Bill's not.
Is there just a lag with the...
So, Nadia, one of the questions that did come up against in one-on-ones, so you're addressing some of it, is, why do we have some areas where there's five feet, why is there some areas where there's five and two, and some where there's six?
So, basically, the bike lanes are in areas that can be accommodated, the minimum they want to have ideally is five feet. In areas where we can accommodate more, the consultants wanted to make sure that we had, we were using that space. So, between Encinal Middle School and Menlo Atherton High School, there's concerns with a lot of the students biking in areas that aren't considered the bike lane, they're behind the trees. So, they wanted to make that area, if possible, safer, and since there's enough room in that area to accommodate between, I think it's Glenwood and Prior Lane, they wanted to accommodate that by putting in the five-foot lane and then the buffer, so that there creates some sense of gap for the students to feel safer to bike in the road, in the bike lane.
So, with regards to that, are you saying that the asphalt... So, with regards to that, um, are you saying that the asphalt is already there because of maybe how the road is laid out, et cetera? And so, we're just gonna accommodate it and, and cut it up differently? Or are we going to have to actually expand the road?
That area, the approach, it can accommodate it, with the exception of right at the intersection of Glenwood. So, if you go to sheet, let's see, um, L ten and eleven, where they show the little gray section? Uh, there's a small section that needs to be widened at the intersection, because that's where it starts to have three lanes for, uh, the left turn lane. So, everything approaching that accommodates it. And just so that it's continuous to the intersection, they've added a small section of pavement. So, that area was able to accommodate it without, um, impacting trees, the drainage and then.
That's the area going south?
Uh, that's going south, yeah, towards the school, the high school.
So, if it's going south, I guess there's a, there's a home that's got a, um, a fence that was moved from, from a, a large home up in San Francisco. Oh, it's almost right on that, it's right on that, it's an empty fence.
Is it, no, is, what, what intersection is that?
That's Glenwood.
Oh, it's Glenwood.
Yeah, so, are you, did you all look at that? You're not approaching on, on this space.
I'm gonna go to the sheet, and then I'll mark it off, and then.
There is some space there.
There is space there.
You're saying that, you're seeing that it is right on the fence?
No.
Yeah, it looks like it when you look at it, but, you know, of course, I'm seeing these little dots, and I don't know if that's his fence, but it's right there, as you're making that.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, and I'm seeing the, the right-of-way, but I can actually discuss with the consultant.
Well, you just verify it.
Yeah, they're doing surveys, so we'll have them take a look at that as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Rick, any questions?
Uh, I thought that when we looked at this previously, we had had a comment about a, um, crosswalk across Fair Oaks at Marsh, not, sorry, not Marsh, there is one at Marsh, but at, at Fair, uh, across, uh, Middlefield at, uh, Fair Oaks. Because if I understand it, if there are, uh, students or whatever, bicyclists approaching Atherton in a westbound manner on Marsh Road, uh, and then they, and they want to go south, they're gonna go over this crosswalk that's provided for at Marsh Road, that's fine. And, and then they'll go down the bike lane that, that is southbound on, uh, Middlefield Road. But if they are westbound on Marsh and they go north and want to come up Fair Oaks, which is a fairly common way for people to move, uh, there's no way to get across, uh, Middlefield Road without fighting the traffic. There's not a crosswalk that would, that would help them, I thought that'd come up.
It did, so, this was a comment that was brought in, we gave them a list of comments that were brought to us at the city council. We had two meetings with them and they missed it, and so we added that to the comments. So, we gave them an Excel with, um, a list of things that we noticed were, were missed in the sixty-five percent, this was one of the items that, that's on the response to comments.
Okay, so we'll, so that's a comment subsequent to these pages being created.
That they need to do, correct, so this, they made this.
Does it mean ninety-five percent?
They'll be, it should be done at the ninety-five percent, it's in our sixty-five percent comments, but they need to put into the ninety-five percent.
Please.
That's one of the comments, that was my comment about the peninsula streets, the vice, uh, bike lanes through Austin, across Atherton Avenue, and then, uh, I mean, there's no crosswalks there in comment that I heard that, well, bikes have, uh, you know, right away on the road, they're just like cars, and they don't need bike lane, like a crosswalks. Well, on busy streets like this, you need some kind of marking, and so that's what's really missing in the peninsula bike path through our streets there. Yeah, well, okay.
I think that's, so.
I'm sorry, but I think that, that is, that needs to be addressed.
I, I, I think that, uh, obviously, I don't know if that's the only thing.
There's things I'd like to address.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the only, only.
What would you like to address? Now he's becoming.
So, I, I have a question, a question. This is sixty-five percent, what's the next?
The ninety-five percent, so we're gonna.
Can we see that again?
It goes to March first, uh, the community meeting on March 1st.
To get there and put as well, yeah.
Can we look at it in detail then? I mean, this is the first time I've seen this.
I know, and the council requested that the city sixty-five percent drawings, that's why that's here. Uh, the next step is the ninety-five percent, that's actually going to a public comment section, and then before it goes out to bid, they will see it again.
They'll be seeing the sixty-five percent next week, and then we'll be able to incorporate comments into that. Um, if they can't incorporate it into the ninety-five percent, they'll have them to incorporate to the hundred percent.
When does the council see the ninety?
We'll see it at the next, uh, city council.
March first, March first.
March first.
Is the community meeting.
Next city council.
Which is the, no, but that's a community meeting, right?
Yes.
So, can we, can, can we get a copy of this to look at?
Yeah.
That's the only one?
What, that's sixty-five percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can make me one, okay.
We've also posted on the website, so it's, it's public for the residents to see before the meeting as well.
Okay, and maybe that can expand a little bit. My side is looking very challenged.
All right.
Yeah, but I'm thirty, you're such a.
All right, all right, yes, Rick, please.
Uh, I know I have the privilege of asking, how am I this in front of me?
Yes.
Sorry, I ended up here.
I have it in front of me as well.
Um, so, uh, in the images, in, in the page three of the document, it shows different configurations, northbound, southbound bike lanes, and so on and so forth. It doesn't appear to me, and maybe I'm misreading it, it doesn't appear to show, it, it, it shows a buffer lane on the southbound and a buffer lane in northern, and bounding southbound is two options over, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the typicals you're talking about, so, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, my question is, it doesn't show a situation where there is a bike lane between two automobiles going in the same direction. But if I look at the intersection of Oak Grove and Middlefield Road, if I'm reading it properly, and maybe I'm not, but if I'm reading it properly, this is seventeen and twenty-one, it shows in the southbound direction on Middlefield, that there's a right turn automobile lane. And between that automobile lane and the southbound traffic lane that will continue on Middlefield, there's a bike lane, so the bike lane is between two lanes of cars. And isn't that something that we had a fair amount of discussion about?
Yeah.
You're referring to the Oak Grove intersection, seventeen?
That's correct, yeah. The Oak, if I'm, if I'm looking at it right, the Oak Grove intersection shows a bike lane in the southbound direction, uh, before it comes to Oak Grove, it shows automobiles on either side of the bicycle.
Yeah, it's like.
You ever see my friend?
It was, because we put it in, because we put it in the class one lane, and it's on the far right, so it would cross over at the intersection.
And then here's on the right side, so.
Yeah, you're right, you're exactly right.
It will probably get in the next model.
I'm seeing that as like a, a right, right, bike lane, um, but you're seeing it as.
On the far side?
You're, you're looking at.
On, there's a right.
No, I'm, it's not a right turn bike lane, it's this going continuing south bike lane, I'm just saying that the right turn automobile lane
Mm.
is on one side of the continuing bike lane, and the continuing automobile lane is on the other side of the continuing bike lane. So, you have a bicycle lane in between two lanes of traffic.
Are you saying the maneuver that also turns right here?
Yeah, that's.
Is on.
I don't, I think that's.
There isn't a separate right turn. Yeah, there, not here, um, this is a through and a right to go in here, so this, you're looking at this as being a, a lane here or?
The, the left, it's in the center.
Well, it looks like there's a bicycle with an arrow in front of it, with, before you come to those dashed lines.
Yeah, that's the bike.
But the right turn.
There's no lane on the right.
She said, there's no lane on the right, there's not a lane on the right. That wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, the, it's, the dirt.
It looks like.
That's dirt, okay, it just looks like.
With the tree, so, yeah, there's no lane there.
All right.
So, that's a, that's a right turn on it.
Gotcha.
Okay, so that's not, that's not what I was suggesting, that's, that's not.
Yeah, this intersection, we did talk, uh, for the last city council meeting, I think in November, about, um, the concern of, uh, the Oak Grove right turn, and that, uh, bicyclist now, since that's a class one on this side, not being recognized by the vehicles turning. So, that's why they proposed doing a sign to warn them, 'cause the police officer at the time said that they, um, they need to have something to actually regulate it. So, having the warning sign is what was requested, and so that's what they came up with, the consultant came up with.
Well, you, you need to put it on, on all sides, because, uh, except at school hours, which, you know, that takes care of a lot of it, uh, there's, there is, to keep traffic moving, there's right turn, uh, from Middlefield going south onto Oak Grove. And that's a, because that goes down to the Menlo Park train station, that is heavily traveled, and, um, and of course, you also have the church there, and Valen's Road, and you have the, the other school that's down there, which is Nativity School. So, um, we should probably put the, the sign on Middlefield, turning right, similarly, we should have one on, on going, uh, going north, because that's where the kids are turning down to go down to Laurel. So, there will be small children going down that way as well.
I think the main concern for this area was that, um, for the vehicles, um, on the south side, they were behind the tree path, so they're not as visible. Um, in this area, since it's along the road, it's very visible that the vehicles, um, can see the bikes on the road. Um, that's why the sign was brought there, it's because these, uh, bikes were coming out of nowhere and not recognizing them right away. Um, I can bring this to their attention so they can look over it.
Yeah, I'd say.
I know that that is less signs, it's something that Atherton.
So, uh.
Definitely you should look at it from going at least south, because it's very tight.
So, um, just for the record, we all don't have that detail, I mean, we would've liked an opportunity to have at least that to review. Bill's the only one that seems to be.
It's 'cause I go electronic.
It's on, it's on, it's on the digital packet, it's not a print pack.
Well, there are a few dinosaurs up here that, uh.
Get like broken, that's cool.
We will make sure you all have a printed copy.
He's just way cool, um, we aren't so cool, but it would've been helpful to.
You can even make a paper, you see, they put it at you, I'll get it closer.
Okay, I get it.
You can't do that with paper.
Hey, we're just, I do this. So, with that being said, thank you very much. So, with that being said, I think that we're, I mean, just for us to be able to prepare, this would've been nice to have, because then we would have less time looking through things and more time to question. So, um, let's see if any members of the public have any question or comments related to this topic. Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comments, final comments from my colleagues that I know have very short responses. Thank you, none.
I think this was a great review.
It was a great review, thanks very much. No, actually, I just, no, and you're bringing it back to us.
You'll see it again in March.
In March, thank you very much.
The hearing.
Hey, where is it?
Look at the Georgia Councilmember Riddick once, that one will work again.
You're slow.
After the, you got a big period, and then so probably dropping the summer time after school.
I have a schedule, is it up, flipped here, or, or we assigned you additional?
Oh, there, there was one on the last page.
Was it the electronic version?
Back to others, um, yes, please send it to us. Uh, thank you, George, thank you very much, let's go ahead and, sorry, we're trying to get you to go home before sunset tomorrow. Um, let's go ahead and move to item number one, which is.
Review and discuss.
Yes, yes. Robert and others. Okay, good evening, council, councilmembers, members of the public. Um, before you, um, is a review for a request for proposal. Uh, during our January meeting, the council directed staff to create a request for proposal to solicit consulting firms for assistance in developing a new business license tax ordinance that fits the town, as well as further engagement and education on other revenue alternative, uh, measures. Staff recommends the engagement of a consultant that specializes in the assistance of survey and tax measure strategies to assist the town with the ballot measure. So, provided for you, uh, for your reviews, requests for proposals to solicit consulting firms that can provide this specialized service in implementing and, and amending tax measures. Also, within the RFP, staff recommends the town solicit a consultant to not only assist with the business license tax measure, but also review other, two other alternative revenues, a potential transient occupancy tax focused on short-term rentals, and the use of a site of space sales tax for construction project. So, staff recommends that the council review the RFP and make additional recommendations of any to the RFP. With council authorization, staff would solicit proposals from consultants and set up a review of proposals by a staff review committee and make recommendations to council based on qualifications, references, references in cost. One of the policy focuses is to, important to note that the timeline for a two thousand eighteen ballot measure is tight. Council would have to authorize a measure for the ballot in July two thousand eighteen. As a result, you'll find in the RFP, there's a, um, it asks the consultant to identify timeline of activity and task for a November twelve, two thousand eighteen measure and/or a November two thousand twenty measure. Um, with that being said, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Robert. Um, colleagues, any questions for Robert?
Uh, I have a question.
Please, Rick.
Robert, you said that the RFP would request information on two other types of taxes, which you defined, but if I read it, it says, and provide a review and analysis of potential other revenues, including those two. So, it could be more than just two others?
Uh, potentially it could be, uh, but our focus is these two plus, in addition to just the business license tax.
So, let me get to what you see.
Yes.
Okay.
Remember, the sales tax, site is one is not valid mention.
Right, it's, it's voluntary, but they would give us a review on other experiences that they've had with other jurisdictions and how to implement that, and give us an analysis, um, uh, on it, like projections, forecasts, analysis.
So, that's, where did the transit occupancy tax idea come from? Because it's, to me, it's a little bit coming from, from a, a, a left field, a different place that we discussed in different sections, and now suddenly it's, it appears here, so why, why is it here?
So, I was at the city manager department meeting a couple weeks ago, and around the table, we were talking about transit occupancy taxes. And all the communities around the table, Encinal, Encinal, Meteo, Encinal, we're talking about raising their T O Ts fourteen or sixteen percent, and that they all started to recapture Airbnb and short-term rentals and BRVOs and HomeAway, and all those activities in their communities that were already occurring. Some of them were developing regulatory ordinances around them.
You're now explaining why you want it on here, as opposed to, you heard it at a meeting two weeks ago, and now you're putting it on this thing, that's.
I put it on here to explore, because they're happening in town.
I know, I understand, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, it's just. Right. Now, with the discussion of why as opposed to how.
Yeah, okay.
Gotcha, all right. Uh, any other questions for staff? Look at it. I like that look. All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask any members of the audience that would like to make any public comments on item number twenty-one. Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comments, we'll get back to my, uh, colleagues and, uh, see any final comments. And obviously, in this case, we are looking for some direction. Okay, uh, please, Mike.
So, Jim, so my, my quick thought is, um, I believe we've had a pretty consistent view as a council that, um, our revenue levels are, are sufficient, we're not looking for tax increases. And that particularly, since we just went out for the personal tax, and you have a very majority and less, far less than two-thirds we needed, that we wanted to, to be sure that we weren't trying to, um, send the message that we're gonna work around that by getting some new, new tax sources. So, we had discussed the, the, the business license tax, um, as a diversification of existing taxes, right?
Right.
And, and we also had separately discussed short-term rentals as a separate issue, completely independent revenue, but just how you wanna do it is kind of not. Um, I, I prefer to, I will disgruntle, I guess, the, the transit occupancy tax came into this path, because I think, I think that's where the whole discussion itself is part of, what do you want to do with short-term rentals? And this is a piece of that, so I would rather not have the revenue driven, and I'd rather have that driven by what do you want our community to be? So that's my, I will say, I really like this idea of this point-of-sales, uh, tax, that's a point-of-sale tax, that's a very, really interesting idea, that I'd like to learn more about. Um, it seems to fit our community very well.
Yeah. Uh, Rick?
Well, I have similar comments, in that this is the first time that I've seen the reference to either of these two other proposals, and if I read the RFP, as I said, it is much broader than just focusing on two items. It says, provide a review and analysis of potential other revenues, which could be expanded. So I would like to limit this, I don't see the need to get into this trans, transient occupancy taxes. I mean, I know we've had a couple complaints, people who've had Airbnb next door to them, and we respond to complaints, we've, we've had a discussion about it, and we've decided it's not appropriate for Haverton. Uh, and, uh, taxes are a sensitive issue in this town, and we have been exploring the business license tax for some time, and I think we, and we've had good discussion about it, but it hasn't been completed, I think that's what we should focus on. If, I, I don't, I don't know the consumer use tax, uh, that might just refer to, if other members of the council want to pursue that, I'm fine to go for it. Uh, but I think we should limit this and get done with the business license tax.
Thank you. Uh, uh, thank you.
Sure, um, so first off, you know, I think with regards to the business license tax, I, I'm surprised it's taken this long, it should have been settled by now. We originally looked at this, with, with Rick's idea, about a year and a half ago, and there was a discussion, the primary discussion around it was, we don't want to hurt small businesses, how are we going to exempt the mom and pop, or the cleaning lady, or something like that? And while there were some discussions on revenue share, et cetera, staff presented a small sample of nearby communities, one council member was, was, uh, uh, objecting to the whole thing, uh, but, you know, we all had some, some discussions, and I think, um, it was not presented as something that's commonplace. You know, shortly thereafter, at a lead the cities meeting, I found that the business license taxes, similar to the one we were talking about, which were revenue-based, were very, very common. And, uh, some, some people were pointing to eighty percent of the communities have that, others, maybe the numbers were a little bit lower, but substantially greater than sixty percent. So to me, the business license tax could have been, had, we could have addressed it by having, say, a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars, and above that, there's revenue sharing, that takes care of the small mom and pop shops. Or we could say, hey, you know, you know, as far as the revenue, we're going to look at the league of cities and find out what other people are charging, and we could identify the, the average, or the median, or even the mode for what revenue share we want to have. And I think it's, it's a lot simpler than a consultant was going to make it. So the important thing for me is that we move forward on this. So, you know, and obviously, we would have to write a, a process, and we would probably, over time, amend that process, but, you know, it seems logical that we would have some sort of license fee, and, and, you know, when I read this staff report, and I read the RFP, it kind of opens the door and says, well, or if you want to spend more time on it, I know it doesn't say exactly that, Robert, but we recognize that maybe you won't get it done in time for us to put it on the ballot. Well, last time we s, we were looking at it, it was a year and a half ago. So we kind of gave this a slow roll, and, and I'm a little disappointed in that. And so I think that we need to make sure that if we're going to go to a consultant, we limit the scope so that it is not overwhelming, and they can get this thing done, and we're clear that we want it done, so that we have time to discuss it as a council, and then have a vote on it. The way this, the, the calendar is, is scheduled, they're going to finish their work, and we're going to have one bite at the apple, and we're going to have to vote. So I, I just don't want to have this thing to where it becomes a failure. So I, I believe we're complicating it with other things. I think that the sales tax item can be done at another time, I think it's a great idea, and, you know, congratulations to George and to, to, to Robert for coming up with it. And I think that it's something that might be simple to implement, and, and doesn't cost anybody any real money, because all you're doing is changing the point of sale. I'm opposed to the TOT tax, it essentially legalizes Airbnb, and we already had a discussion on that, so we're not ready for that. You know, while there, there may be short rentals in town, as, you know, George has mentioned, okay? They are today illegal, and we have recourse to address those problems. So I prefer to leave it the way it is, rather than widening the door, which I believe eventually we will regret. We regularly get complaints now from residents about rental issues, and we have a way that we can implement them. So I prefer that, as, as Mike had pointed out, I, I'd like to leave that off the list. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for talking. Uh, councilwoman.
So, um, I agree with my colleagues about the TOT, I think that this is the wrong thing to do. Uh, we would be implicitly implying that Airbnb is, or other short-term rentals are okay in the heart. Um, I, I disagree that we need to explore or expand our business license tax, especially because in June of last year, we passed Measure A to fund a civic center based on no new taxes. We promised the residents that we would not, uh, increase or pass new taxes, and then we said the same thing about the parcel tax, and, um, while the parcel tax, uh, gained a majority in votes, it did not gain, uh, the two-thirds of the majority that needed. So I disagree, uh, wholeheartedly about going out for even, um, the business license tax RFP.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a lot to digest. Um, I obviously am going to agree with my colleagues related to, um, the, uh, 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 but.
To.
TOT. TOT. Um, that is obviously a room that, uh, by legalizing it or by collecting fees, and I know everybody else does it, I just can see the phone start to ring, and maybe a small margin of people, but it's still an issue. Um, and, yeah, maybe it's revenue source, but it's an implied, we're now legalizing them, and we're collecting revenue. Um, the business license, um, tax measure, that's obviously been something that we've talked about. Um, one of our problems has been is that, based on the perception of some people, is that those, the increases were so large that, and there wasn't enough outreach. I have concerns that because of the short timeframe, um, addressing something like this in a short timeframe, uh, no offense to my colleague, but, uh, sometimes putting things together in a rushed fashion can be a tendency to cause the biggest backlash. So, um, although I know it seems like we've been talking about this forever, but maybe it is that incremental step that works. Um, and obviously, your new proposal with the, um, SL construction project, that is actually a very, I think, open, and I think most of our, um, contractors that are in town would actually be supportive of it, because it can also be taken into consideration that maybe some of the costs that they actually are paying, we're going to pay them already, um, would also influence us on how we go about a business license measure towards them. They would also be very supportive of another program, instead of hitting them one way, they're more than happy to pay, because they're already paying, you know? Um, so, um, I don't know if you've gotten enough or a consensus from everybody here, but, uh, the difficulty is in trying to put it, I, I'm not quite sure if everybody is on the same page related to the, Mike, actually, you have three people that are not in favor of moving forward related to business license component. So, obviously, that one's a non, non-starter, transit occupancy, I think you got all five of us, and the short-term rental component, or, excuse me, um, the sales tax, ASL, I like that. You have everybody.
I think you confused me a little bit. Remove the TOT, limit the focus of the RFP to just the business license tax, and an evaluation of the sales tax site of space issue, which is kind of a side thing, it doesn't require our vote, and then rest of the time.
I'm not sure that's why, can we tell that this license tax, for a minute? I'm not sure I heard, I'm not sure who's ready to go for it now, who wants to delay it.
I don't think there is across the board support for the business license. So let's take a vote, since we actually, there, there's some vagueness here. How many members of council are in favor of the business license measure tax for the November ballot?
I'm in favor of moving forward.
That's not on the agenda, what's on the agenda is asking a consultant to evaluate, whether we put it on the agenda later or not.
Absolutely correct, and I am so happy you checked it.
Including the business license tax in the RFP.
Did you have a? Right, I assume the business license tax in the RFP.
And, and the issue.
Do you want to go one by one?
We're going to go one by one, just because I think that, uh, there is some conflict. Yeah, please, one second.
I think, I'm sure, about LeBron, a, a logical way to proceed here might be to move forward on the one where there's unanimous agreement, or appears to be good agreement exploring the point-of-sale component. We don't know what that would bring in, or what that would do, so logically, that may say, let's do that and see what it is, which would push the business license tax to the next opportunity, which unfortunately is two years away.
I agree, yeah, and that, I think, that, uh, sounds reasonable, I think, Rick, are you, you were on the.
I, I mean, I have, my first question is, did we say in the course of either the, um, Measure A in June, or the parcel tax, that this business license tax is not something that we would be considering? Is, if, if that fell into the category of increased taxes, as Elizabeth suggests, then I think it's a mistake to pursue it.
Right, but it's an amendment to the existing.
Yeah, if, if it's something that isn't.
But, but just forgive me for stepping in, not that I'm going to rewrite history. I think that that would imply that was passed, that we wouldn't impose secondary. And not to say that I'm supporting this, but I'm just thinking that that was the logic of that. We won't go for new taxes if you support this, we're, you know, there won't, I think that was the logic behind it. And with its failure, it does mean that these items are off the table, because we said there were no new taxes. I mean, it didn't pass.
The parcel tax.
The parcel tax.
Well, you have a Measure A.
Right.
So my, my perspective on it was, that, at least what, what I intended was, if we went forward with this license tax, the sole reason for doing that was to diversify our revenue, to get it from other sources, and that there'd be a complement reduction in taxes, you know, in taxes that are imposed on African residents, to keep our tax level about the same amount.
Right, yeah. That was.
You're not sure that that, yeah?
Well, with, no, that tax reduction certainly has occurred.
You're, you're, you're getting a whole bucket of seven hundred and fifty dollars off your tax bill this year.
I think that I.
But I like your approach, excuse me, I like, uh, Councilmember's approach about the point-of-sale, to investigate that, to see how that would work, because then we can back into the business license at a later time.
Uh, I think that sounds reasonable, and I think it's a reasonable approach.
Great question, please do. I mean, does it make sense to have a consultant just look at this point-of-sale thing, or is that too small?
No, I don't think, that's where I was going to chime in. We have a consultant on board already that does our property tax analysis. Rather than do a whole nother RFP, we should request HDL to look at this issue for us. They're the ones that were doing it for Eastville, which is really.
I like that, that, that's right. I don't like RFPs.
I think that's healthy, uh, that's a healthy approach, sorry, Bill, I know, shorter, shorter than this.
No business.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, and you obviously know the answer to the transit occupancy.
So just, so we're clear, if the staff is not proceeding forward with anything further on the business license tax, until we have additional information about how the site of space sales tax might apply to the attitude.
Correct. Bingo. Let's move on to item number twenty-two, not that I'm trying to, oh, wow, this is a good one. This is Marty's, the Civic Center update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, yeah, this is your monthly Civic Center update. And we actually have seven items for you to, um, discuss, and the first one is really to receive and file the cost model manager and the project schedule, which, since your January meeting has not changed, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have on that. Again, per the project schedule, on your March twenty-first meeting, we're going to be coming back next month, asking for authorization to take the bid documents, and take them off the bid with the five pre-qualified general contractors that you disqualified last summer. So everything's moving forward as far as the schedule, and the cost model has not changed at all.
Yeah.
So, uh, the next item is number two, is authorize the city attorney to review and the city manager to execute a cost-sharing agreement with West Bay Sanitary District regarding their shoreline that needs to be relocated as part of the project. And one of the things, per your direction, we negotiated a cost-sharing agreement, which is attached to your staff report, and was approved by the district board last Wednesday on the fourteenth, and it's where the town will pay for the design costs, and they will pay for the construction costs. So we're asking for authorization in front of the city attorney to review that, and then the city manager to approve that.
Perfect, Marty, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take them, as you did, don't talk.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for comments, my colleagues are going to do your comments, I'm going to help with the public.
Okay.
Bring back us, we're going to close each one.
Okay.
So, any questions? No questions, any members above, any questions related to item number two that we just discussed? Seeing none, I'm closing public comments, back to item number two, can I get a motion to?
I'm sorry, what did you say that again? What did you just say?
I'm an auctioneer, I'm already an auctioneer, and I, item number two. Uh, so I'm closing public comment?
Why?
We're moving to item number two, to authorize the city council, or authorize the city attorney to review the city manager to execute the cost-sharing agreement with the West Bay Sanitation District. Want to hear that again?
No, I got it. So I go ahead and.
I think I woke you up. So I'm.
Alright.
Bye.
I almost didn't do this every time, this is.
Number three, Marty.
Number three, uh, Mayor has authorized the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute a construction contract for temporary library site improvements with Redwick Construction in the amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand two hundred, and authorize a twenty percent contingency of eighteen thousand for unforeseen conditions. And Redwick was selected per council direction, we sent out an RFP, and we got two bids, one from Redwick, and one from Brero Construction, which was a hundred and four thousand two hundred. The engineer's estimate was a hundred and thirty thousand, so we're recommending Redwick do the temporary site work needed for the mod, mobile modulars, which is the next item down the list.
I do have a quick question. I was going to say, Marty, just give me a, do we have a number for the total cost for the temporary, um, use of the library? You know, the temporary period of the library?
Is far, um, as far as the, the mobile modulars?
The whole thing?
Um, it's, I'm sure it's in the cost model manager, I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sure, we can get that for you.
I just like, it, it just feels to me like we're spending a lot of money, and I'd like to have a good handle on that.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and something thousand dollar number in this category for.
Right.
Right, no worries.
That is, the cost of that, for the temporary library, that was calculated approximately hundred and thirty, is part of overall cost on my page for ten, of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars in the cost model manager.
No, I understood, understood.
Well, that, I think that's for all of it.
Right.
That eight twenty-eight, so.
That's right.
For the temporary.
Thank you very much.
So again, they were selected through an RFP process, and the lowest response of theirs.
Uh, I, my question was solely related to the twenty percent contingency, and that's the standard contingency?
Well, there's, there's actually, you know, some unknowns, like cabling, that we still don't have a good handle of what the costs are, but they're going to be between five and ten thousand, so we'd like to get the flexibility so we don't have to come back to council and then impact the schedule, so.
That's pretty common, twenty percent.
Right.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council, yes? Rick, please.
I just want to confirm that the cost for the temporary library site come out of the donor fund, is that right?
Comes out of the library fund.
Yes, it comes out of the library.
And just one follow-up, Marty, when does a shovel hit the ground for this?
Uh, we're expecting March, when they're going to start doing the work. Exactly what date, we don't have a date yet, but it'll be in March, so things are going to be moving very quickly from now on, here.
And we talk quickly, thank you, Marty. Um, any? Any other questions? Seeing no questions, more questions in council, any members of the public, any questions related to this item? Seeing none, I'm closing public comments. Closing comments. Greg, I'm closing comment.
I want to speak on when you get to open comments, so I don't...
I will, I will wake you up. All right. All right, yes, can I get a motion to approve?
The move.
Wait a second, any, I, wow, I got a near... All right. Next item, thanks, Marty.
Number four, is authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Mobile Modular Management Corporation in the amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-five thousand seven nine seven thirty-six, and authorize a twenty percent contingency in the amount of sixty thousand for the city manager to execute any needed changes to the lease or required unforeseen work or equipment. And this is both for a twenty-four month period for a library, the four, we're going to have four trailers out there, and then for the temporary administration trailers, which are going to have three, and those are going to be for twenty months, and then the big costs are really the one-time setup and takedown costs as part of your report, and this is based on the state contract that we're piggybacking off per the town's procurement policies.
You mentioned the state are over-piggybacking on somebody else's getting better rates.
Right. Yeah, they, the state goes through a competitive bid process, and then we're just piggybacking off that.
Okay, so we didn't have to go with the...
Correct.
Okay, that's good.
We'll take it, we'll take all the discounts we can get.
Yeah.
And setup and takedown, so this includes removal of the temps after prior use?
Correct. Correct. And there's actually a lot of work associated with that.
It's a deal. Any other questions? Seeing none, members of public, correct? No, no more closing public comments, back to council, can I get a motion to approve? All in favor? All right, aye. Moving on to the next.
Number five, is authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute an agreement with Silverado Valley Electric in the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand eight twenty-six fifty, and authorize a twenty percent contingency in the amount of four thousand for any unforeseen conditions, and that is to fully make all the trailers have all the electrical hookups from the PG&E transformers and things like that, and they were selected through an informal bid process.
Informal.
Right, so we asked three different companies for bids, and then they were selected, and they've done work for the town before.
It's a small town.
Right, and they've done, they've done a lot of work for us before.
You sure it's not still coming out?
Beautiful. Any questions for Marty?
That's for five trailers, is that what that's for?
There's going to be actually four trailers for the library and three for administrations of the town.
Seven trailers, okay. Anybody else, questions for Marty? Seeing none, members of public, any questions related to this item on the agenda? Seeing none, closing, all in, aye. Let's move on to item number...
Number six, mayors authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute an agreement with Piedmont Moving Systems in amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand five three nine fifty-nine, and authorize a twenty percent contingency. Piedmont was one of three vendors that the San Mateo County libraries have used in past projects, and we had two other bids come in, Crown Worldwide and NorCal Moving, and Piedmont was the lowest responsive bidder, so we're recommending that provide the moving services.
Was nice of them to be piggybacking on somebody else getting another reduction. We like that. Any questions for Marty?
I do.
Oh, Bill.
So you're saying you're moving some books over to the temporary location, obviously that's a lot smaller than the facility, you've got to even know that's small. All the, all the collections are in the Peninsula Library System, so anybody at any location or go online can get those. So I was, I was perplexed by, we're going to move them into long-term storage or whatever to store them, because they have to be moved where they're available to anybody to check out. You can go to Menlo Park or the game, wherever, and check out any book that's in here in Menlo Park or in our facility. Similarly, we can say we want something, you know, from wherever, and it comes, it gets here the next day, as long as it was available on the shelf, so. So I know that you're working with the library system, but we want to make sure that all the books still are available, and I think that the Peninsula Library System and users all want to make sure they are too, so I can't see moving back, and then they're going to move somewhere and be put in somebody else's collection, and we want, since we paid for them out of our funds, we want to make sure that we do get them back.
Well, I think it's, you know, if space is available, I'm sure they have as many books as possible here. If not, they're going to have to put them in storage, so.
Well, there can't be a storage because they're available for the...
Right, so the library's going to determine that, I mean, that's, we're not really getting involved in that.
It may be, it may be their storage is similar to what we're using this pod out here for, accessible. So you go in and out of there for plans all the time.
Honestly, I, with all due respect, Councilor Vice Mayor, I don't think that that's how it is when you're in this kind of a situation, and the books would go into storage, and they're not really going to be readily accessible to check out in and out. We can check with the Anne Marie and the library, JPA, but if they're available, they would be available at other libraries, you know, in the system, but not specifically in our facility. I mean, it's a special situation.
Right.
We'll check in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check.
We honestly are not managing.
Right, exactly.
All right, no more questions from my colleagues, any members of public, any comments?
The moving here is, this is both library and town, I assume?
Correct.
So there's some allocation.
Right.
Sure you have any more questions?
No.
And we have an allowance in there for PD twos, which is, they're going to be at the end of the budget, so.
That's worth it.
Right.
All right, any members of public, any comments on this item? Seeing none.
Yes, hello?
I mean, shake this up here. So, you're on. Hi, I'm good, you were good. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, let's move to the last item.
The last one, mayors authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute an agreement with an auction house, selected through informal bids to dispose of town-owned surplus property, no longer deemed necessary.
Elizabeth, question?
No.
Oh, you had to move that finger?
Is there an auction house, I mean, are there, these would be reusable items, are there any things that we could donate to, ship charities if we wanted to?
President of council, I heard, I heard my Q and A, that that was an opportunity to donate them to charities and/or sister churches, that the town might be aware of that might be, we can do a sticking back, even what you do.
I guess it depends on how much the value is.
Right.
What kind of stuff is it?
Well, it's right, like, right there, that TV and VCR in the corner there, that's the kind of stuff we're talking about.
But there's also...
None of this is like real olders.
No, 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 not at all.
It's not like our...
It's old obsolete equipment, pretty much like that, councilman.
It doesn't have a...
Somebody might think it's got value.
But somebody might be used.
Right.
Well, that's a, that's a player, and then there's a, there's other pieces of electronic equipment or gas, or things like that.
We have a lot of those kinds of things laying around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I donated one of the last, sorry. Any other?
Second.
Well, I'm just saying, hold on a second, I have to make sure Greg doesn't have any questions or comments.
No, he's...
Malcolm as well.
Malcolm is wanting to be on council again, like, no doubt.
Any members of public? Seeing none, I'm closing public comments. Can I get you? It's coming out, you know, a lot of, so all in favor?
I...
Thank you very much.
That's it.
When I get them all riled up like this, I definitely... All right, so we're going to move to council, what part? Oh, you want to make it? I asked a question.
I just have a quick question asked now, these members don't appear to move, is that accurate, have they not changed at all?
So then, that brings up another item that's not on the agenda, but that...
She's asking a question, but we're not talking about it.
No, no.
Thank you very much.
There should be...
Item number twenty-four, future agenda items, we don't have any. Item number twenty-five, Greg. I was, this is all you. You've got three minutes, whatever.
You know, I think you have to excuse me for being paranoid, but I spend Sunday morning watching five hours of television of everything that goes on in this nation, and I've just been overcome by those seventeen children as I looked them in the eye, three times, each one of them. And I just think that it's more serious than, I just read the chief's letter, and I thought it was a very good letter, but I don't think when you have eight thousand students in a town with less than seven thousand people, that one police officer's going to be enough, especially when you have children. We lose almost five to ten children a year from suicides on the trains. And most of that's been in Palo Alto, when they put a lifeguard on every intersection to stop it. But with the pressure that's put on some of these kids to perform, you know, I think it's, even in Atherton, that we have to be sensible, and I just don't think one police officer for eight thousand kids, even no matter how fast they can get there from Menlo or Redwood City or where else. So I just think that, I probably should have spoke when you were talking about taxes, because I think, it just seems to me as a, someone who's paranoid about safety, that you need more than one, and the only way you're going to get that is with a parcel tax. And I'm just saying that I think it's, you should have let it to the voters to decide that. If you can get an independent study that says that you need that many people, I would suggest that you go to the voters and let them decide whether they want to pay for it. And if they don't, then the responsibility is theirs, not yours. You've done your responsibility by putting it to them, and I would recommend that you do that, and that you take this event seriously, and it's, there's no simple answer. And you know, my suggestion may not be the right one, but if you want to spend twenty or thirty thousand to get a study, for the help of the chief, figure out what is the best and worst case that you could do, that you could afford, but I recommend that you do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All in favor of closing public comments? Any other member of Malcolm? I think I'm asking you, all right? And anybody else? I remember going to close public comments, and I could ask my colleagues for one motion to your...
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much.